Because like I you typically would think of like.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call to order this Camden Select Word Workshop for May ninth, two thousand twenty-two. We have two agenda items tonight to cover on this work in this workshop for discussion. They are the wastewater department budget and the snow bowl budget budgets. So with that, I think the first one, the agenda is wastewater. Mr. Bostrich, if you would mind start to start the dialogue regarding the the budget overall, perhaps, and give us some input as to any key factors we should be on the lookout for, pay attention to, otherwise the challenges you face this year with your budget.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to kind of talk about the highlights.
Yep, and then we then we can go into more detail. Yep, that'd be perfect.
A lot of this, you know, the the numbers are both the same every year, insurances and that type of thing.
I see that. That's why I suggest, yeah, to hit the highlights and any, like I said, key challenges and things we should be paying attention to.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Please.
Yeah, right on the wastewater administration, going down to GIS updates, that's the third from the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
Fifty thousand to upgrade our GIS system and bring it up to, you know, where potentially where DEP would like to have us. Or is looking at assets and know exactly what we we have out there.
In terms of infrastructure, correct?
Right.
In case people don't understand what GIS is.
Just Graphic Information System, yes, yeah.
Hold on. So that's something for that's been done in in this year's budget or next year's budget that's being proposed?
Well, it's it's been started this this budget that we're in now and next budget will finish it off as getting us where we should be.
But and you're asking for more money or?
Yes, yeah, yeah, because the forty thousand that we had for for this year wasn't nearly enough to get us over the the goal line, if you will, where we want to be.
Okay, so I wasn't aware. I thought that was more of our own initiative, not something that was a requirement from DEP.
Well, it's it's not a requirement they, you know, they but they want us to know what our assets are and where they are and what kind of condition they're in. You know, so we have a good it it helps our management plan for the collection system.
Okay. Your but your budget for twenty twenty-one was forty thousand and the year-to-date spent is four thousand. Were you saying that when the end of the year, the forty thousand will have been spent?
Yes, thank you, yeah.
And ergo to Allison's question, the fifty thousand is an additional amount to be spent in twenty-three.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Where will that fifty thousand take you and towards the finish line?
Well, it'll it we it should get us there. You know, we're going to have any videos that are we've done in this collection system that will have them tied to a a manhole. You'll be able to click on that and watch the video, see what the what the pipe looks like, what kind of condition it's in, manholes and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
We just finished up GPSing all the manholes in the town and, you know, because before they were they were done by photo, but, you know, there there's a lot of tree cover out there, and so they they couldn't get all the manholes. And it made quite a difference on where we were before. And after GPSing it, some of those manholes slid quite a bit, so.
Okay.
And now, does this include any camera work that we're doing ourselves, or this is just integrating our camera, the existing camera system that we have now with the GIS database?
Yeah, what what'll happen, we'll send a file, a video file to CIA, C-A-I, I should say, and they'll put that in our system on our map.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that all going to be part of the publicly available system?
We can make it that way, yes, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Anything else in administration?
Sewer plant and collections.
Mm-hmm.
There's.
Sorry, I'm sorry, back and can we go back to administration for just a second? So is do we have enough in terms of like employees to be doing? I know it took a while to do to get started on the GIS stuff, or like what's holding us back from doing more on some of these things like INI or I had heard there was going to be some kind of a of a system where we were going to try to proactively send people out to camera all the lines, and it was going to be in conjunction with stormwater. And would that be like the staffing for any of that? Would that is that reflected here? Is there any kind of change or?
Well, because we're doing both sewer and stormwater, it'll be one person from wastewater, one person from public works out there running the camera and.
Okay, and we don't need to hire anybody else for that?
No, it takes two people.
And you already have somebody identified and ready to go for that?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
They're going to be doing that full time?
In the when we can, you know, you get into the winter with the cold and, yes, it's difficult to do to do that, so. But, you know, we three seasons, we should be able to be out there and doing camera work.
That's great. And that and the goal is going to be just to do everything?
Yeah, DEP would like to have us inspect everything every five years, so at least twenty percent of the the system per per year is what we're the goal.
After this, after we finish this, it'll be twenty percent every year going forward.
Right, yeah.
And then are we are going to rank the condition of the each of the pipes or?
Yes, yeah.
That's all going to be?
Yes, yeah, we will. The program, we can we can put comments in as we're videoing the the pipe, and we the whoever's running the camera can put comments in there. If they see cracks in the pipe, laterals that are off off joint or that type of thing.
So, wow, we really are. That's great that we're really going to do that, which also speaks to the need. That is probably why we need the more advanced GIS system as well in order to make all of that useful.
Yes.
We really, okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's great. That's really encouraging. Thank you.
Let's go on to operations and maintenance, then. You got a couple of changes in there.
Yeah, yeah, the, of course, with the diesel costs and, you know, the the chemicals were going to come up, they're having their announcing price increases. So I've brought that up to fifty thousand for the year. Same with electricity.
Is the David, your chemicals, is that because of your stated, just want to repeat it, that some of the chemicals is because of the requirement now to disinfect twelve months of the year?
Yeah, that's that's right. That's the the other other piece I should have mentioned, absolutely. Yeah, so instead of spring, summer, and fall, we're going to do it.
Twelve months. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Dave, I have a question, if I may. The the chemicals we use, they don't take, do we have a PFAS problem that we also have to take care of or not?
Well, yeah, there it's it's pretty much in in the sludge and in the the effluent as well.
Okay.
Yeah, we it comes in to the plant.
Does because the the requirement has have changed, right, at the state level? No?
Not at this point, but we're kind of.
Okay.
Oh, not yet.
I thought we I thought they had.
It's coming.
They will.
Okay.
Yeah, they're they're working on that.
And so this budget will takes that into account or not?
No, because we don't know what the standard's going to be yet and what the options are going to be for addressing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right now, it really affects taking the bio solids out of the plant and where it goes and that type of thing.
Okay.
Now, for the sludge, though, is that are you anticipating any increase in the sludge removal cost?
There is a bit of there's ten thousand increase for the sludge removal.
Yeah.
Is that sufficient?
We'll find out. It's mostly this is mostly for the cost of diesel and.
Because aren't they they if they can't spread any of that anymore, is that when does that when does that take effect, the most recent law that bans the land spreading of it all?
It's when, I think it's ninety days after the legislature leaves. It it's going it's being published or something to that matter, and that's when it kicks in, yeah.
That could be a pretty big. Do we have other op like is Casella pretty much the only option we have for?
In in this area, yeah. The the only good thing I can say is that, you know, the cost of landfilling is is about the same as the cost of spreading.
Where would it go if we landfilled it?
Full town.
Yeah, but they're going to have rules, too. That's Juniper Ridge is going to have to. Do you see that other law that just passed that they have to keep their they have to treat all their leachate to the drinking water standard?
I missed that one. Oh, that's that could be a game changer, yeah.
I was just at a conference for the MRA, and they were talking about landfill leachate, and we're licking it over at Midcoast. That's probably where a lot of it's coming from, but for us. Anyway, I don't know. It seems like maybe we might need more money in that one, but.
We need to I think we we need Dave needs to keep us posted on when it's implemented, what does he need?
Exactly.
And if there's an increase needed in the budget, I guess, because we can't, there's no.
I mean, it's so circular. Like, if you can't landspread it and you can't landfill it because it goes back into the leachate that gets treated at the plant, like, I mean, we're kind of in a situation where we don't know what the rules are going to be and what we're going to be able to do with it.
Doesn't help to pay for it with money at this.
Well, we may have to we may have to treat our.
But let's.
Influent. What's it called with not the effluent, but the influent? What is what's the all the stuff that comes in?
That's influent, that's right, yeah.
I call it goes into.
It's influent, I was right.
Goes out of, but anyway, yeah.
Just you'll keep us posted, Dave. Yeah, that's the best we can do, all we can do.
Yep.
That's it, that's right, at this point.
Okay.
Or we could budget more, but I mean.
We don't know how much.
Probably won't take because this budget is for probably won't impact us that much until the next fiscal year, maybe?
I don't know.
Because we don't have what's our what are our options? What are our options if we need more money in the middle of the year with the wastewater budget?
Use reserves.
Because we set the rates based on.
We have reserves, don't we?
Well, we we do, but I wouldn't count on the reserves. I think we'd probably do like a supplemental budget and adjust the rates.
Okay.
One other thing I will say, too, that, you know, that our Centifuse should be coming online beginning of the next year. And, you know, that salt is going to be a lot less than they are now because we're going to get more water out of it.
The salt is going to be higher.
No, less water, yeah.
Yes, that's right.
So there'll be lighter.
Less water, okay.
Well, total less total weight, right.
Yes, it's all comes down to volume.
Oh, yeah.
So that's going to help us as well.
Welcome to Monday, people.
Are we testing? Is there any requirement to test the effluent for PFAS yet?
Oh, yeah, but they're talking about that. Yeah, that's that's coming.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, all of this could potentially be big cost increases for us if we have to.
Yeah, I've looked at some of the some webinars with the technology, and right now it's only being used on very small waste streams. To ratchet it up to, you know, millions of gallons a day is is going to be very costly, what they're doing now. So hopefully that that won't happen until they've got the reasonable technology to do it.
Yeah, the technology's behind the curve.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Interesting.
Okay. Pump station O and M.
Pardon me?
Pump station O and M.
Yeah, okay. Okay, the electricity bill is increasing, so that's ten thousand more, I'm estimating. And pump station maintenance, we want to overhaul all three pumps at the Bayview Pump Station.
Oh.
Because they're all ready to be overhauled. And so I've I brought that up to fifty thousand. It's it's about thirty thousand in parts, and then we're we haven't heard yet for as far as manpower to to do that.
This is complete refurbishment, impeller replacement and all. What kind of pumps are they? The centrifugal?
Yes.
So the impeller replacement?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, and seals and, you know, we're we we're going to send it to Flight, the manufacturer, and they'll look at everything. Then, once they have it apart, we'll have a better idea on just what the cost will be. But, you know, the basic things that get done with it, you're looking at about thirty thousand.
Good idea. Great.
Yeah, plus 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 manpower.
Of course.
On top of that, of course, so.
Now, what kind of capacity do we have at Rossonav?
At Rosson?
Yeah, I mean, are we? How close are we to? How, you know, how much could we expand the system with? We've been talking about John Street.
Right.
If we, you know, what I guess, yeah, what kind of capacity, additional capacity, does that pump station have?
Ah, of course, I don't know right offhand, but we're, you know, we are in good shape in Rosson, you know.
And so do we if the the pumps that we're replacing or refurbishing now, is there anything that we would do differently with that if we knew we were going to expand the system, or is this just all stuff that will continue to work?
Yeah, right now, we're we're fine, you know, with that John Street expansion, there's plenty of capacity for that. And, you know, if we go further, then we just have to look at how many households we're picking up and that type of thing and go ahead and calculate that.
Capital reserves, Dave?
So this year, we're proposing to put five hundred thousand to the upgrade interest payment. And not fund the rest of the reserves here.
And the rest are all zero?
Yeah, zero new funding, yeah.
Because we have pretty healthy balances and.
Yeah.
Most of them, right?
Yes, yeah.
Now, why is the like the INI reserve so healthy considering all the problems that we have?
Yeah, so.
Like, why why? We have so many INI problems, but we have this INI reserve that, I don't know, it's on a different page what the balance was, but it was it was substantial.
Right.
And it never seems to go down much.
Yeah, we did that pipe over Chestnut at Frye that, you know, it was a significant source of INI. What we have to do is find these bigger sources so that we can.
So right now, we don't have anything that's sort of known as a big source?
As a big source, that's right. Right now, they're they're smaller sources. And, you know, we're obviously there's some big ones out there now.
And we have reserves, two hundred thousand, Allison.
What's that?
It's two hundred thousand in in INI reserve total.
Right. It just seems like we have all these problems. It would be like, let's spend that on fixing something.
We want to find the elephant.
Yes.
Got to be an elephant somewhere.
Yeah.
Probably a few.
You have that kind of water flow, it has to be, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. We did just over the winter, found one place where one pipe that was putting seawater into the system during high tide, but it's a private line, so they're they're fixing that themselves.
Oh, I see.
They have to fix that.
Mm-hmm.
Whoa.
Now, this would probably that would get us back to that Wright Pierce. So we put some money in the budget last year.
Correct.
To do to study the problem more.
Well, that and also the the camera position.
Yeah, but like, you know, Wright Pierce, we Wright Pierce came and gave us like a little thing about what they were going to do, but there was like forty thousand dollars last year.
I think you're right. I think you're right.
But but it's not in the budget.
Well, did it get spent? I mean, it shouldn't.
Because it should be. That was one of my questions further down that the I I remember that that conversation about the INI study that we put forty thousand, but if I look at the F-22 act rules, there's nothing.
Right.
The F-22 budget, there's nothing, but year-to-date, there's thirty-seven hundred, so.
Oh, well, so.
I'm confused about where the forty thousand went.
Where's the which line are you looking at?
Capital improvements. Sorry, I'm.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the 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 Wright Pierce services are coming out of the Engineering Professional Services.
Ah.
And we've got forty-five thousand.
I see.
And we've spent five thousand of that so far, and I've got another another ten thousand for the upcoming fiscal year for that, so fifty-five thousand total.
So why do we have thirty-seven on on line sixty twenty-five that has no budget?
Where are you looking?
Capital improvements.
Let me just I'll look up that.
Line three six five two.
Yeah.
Take a look.
It shows year-to-date, thirty almost thirty-eight hundred, and proposed in twenty-three is eighty thousand.
Right.
Yeah, I was just a little.
But I'm confused because there's no budget in twenty twenty-two.
It's because it was probably a carryforward from prior year.
I see, so I don't see the carryforward.
Correct.
So we don't. Okay, I get it.
Wasn't Wright Pierce and Engineering Services under administration?
Well, I'm looking up to see what we actually spent that thirty-seven hundred dollars on out of INI.
I thought there was an engineer. Well, I got to go back and look.
Yeah, the.
Engineering Services under administration.
Right, yeah, for for their services.
So we carried eighty-six hundred dollars from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two in that the capital INI study. We did spend thirty-seven, we spent the thirty-seven hundred dollars on Wright Pierce INI investigation is what it was.
Is that just what it cost for them to come and give us that presentation or?
Pardon me?
Is that what it cost for them to come and give us that presentation? That presentation?
The thirty-seven thirty?
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't accomplish certainly any kind of a study, but they came and gave us a presentation that basically left me feeling like they have no real plan to make any measurable difference. I was very pretty underwhelmed with that. And I was hoping they were going to come back with some kind of a, you know, we had that whole discussion about how we really wanted to know what it would take to solve the problem and to make some kind of measurable. I think Bob was like, you know, give me something I can measure. And we had that whole conversation, and they just didn't do anything. But now we're going to give them eighty thousand dollars more to I just.
Well, that's, you know, they're we're actively now looking for bigger sources, and we've got some we've got some leads.
I feel like.
Give me a couple more months and we'll look, I'm going to find some.
Is the money.
We should contract this out, and somebody should come and and give us a presentation from the Select Word, like, this is what we're going to study, this is what we're going to do. And then we would say, because so far, it we've been paying Wright Pierce a lot for years and years, and we don't even have a we have a few studies from like two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve that identified a couple of things, but there's nothing written that says this is what we've done to date, this is what we know, this is what we don't know, this is.
David, has the has the INI work that we've been doing, has that been being performed principally by internal labor or is being performed by Wright Pierce? I think that causes a conundrum because we have fifty-five thousand forty-five thousand dollars we thought we approved to spend on Wright Pierce to do the work, and I'm reading they're not doing the work, we're doing it.
Oh, no, it's a collaboration.
Okay.
Yeah.
But of the forty-five thousand, is that principally gone in FY twenty-two expended with Wright Pierce for doing INI work, INI investigation work?
For the past year.
For Wright Pierce, what did we spend with them this year? I don't see the number. I don't see a number where they've spent any chunk of change that would substantiate getting a lot of stuff done.
Right.
And that's that's confusion, maybe misreading the budget. But have they done a lot of work? If we asked them to come in on July first at the end of the fiscal year and say, show us what's been done in FY twenty-two, what am I going to see?
We've spent to date roughly ten thousand dollars to Wright Pierce from wastewater.
Year-to-date.
Yeah. Does that is that all connected with INI, or is that is that facility upgrades?
That's INI.
So that's that study, that forty thousand dollar study, what they've done so far.
So they will spend the forty this year?
Yes.
Right, right. And we won't carry it forward, and therefore, we're proposing eighty for next year.
Yeah, right now, we've got four flow meters in the system in areas we think the water may be coming from for going to C Street. That's that's the big one, you know, to get the take the load off C Street.
Right, right. I guess I don't want to see bringing them in. We did forty thousand dollar budget last year, we spent, well, say, ten fifteen we haven't done yet with the fiscal year. That's not a big chunk of forty thousand dollars. Now, we're proposing eighty. I just prefer not to see the same thing happen again next year. So may perhaps what we could do is, I think the eighty is fine, but I think I'd like to see what the plan is, how to utilize that to show where the mice and elephants lie and find them.
Right, yeah.
Program by 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 part of town, by pipe, by whatever you want to do it. That's are they developing that kind of a plan with you to attack this issue across the system?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we have. We have a plan, and we may not spend that eighty thousand if we find.
We'd love to have that update presentation from them and you at some very near term point to justify. We want to spend the money on the INI.
So, Dave, just to clarify, the actual money for the engineering work is the money that you've budgeted in the professional services line in the administration budget?
Yeah, that's right.
And then the eighty thousand, that's more for the equipment associated with the study, like the flow meters and any work that might be done?
Right.
As you're going along and finding things?
Right. And, you know, we may not have to spend that much money, but we want to make sure we had enough there.
Well, I'm not I'm I'm I don't want to quibble with the amount. I just want to just make sure we we see a substantive plan in place, and then we're going to litmus test it through the year to make sure we're spending it.
Yeah, like something.
What I'm hearing is we spent.
Well, no, I just wanted to clarify that so everybody knew what the different pots of money were and and how they related to that study.
It's not at all clear, but I mean, that was a little bit more clear. So we're going to be purchasing flow meters, but I thought they're already flow meters.
Yeah, we've got we've got.
They said we had some already.
Yeah, we have them already. Yeah, we've purchased them already, yeah.
So what's the eighty thousand dollars for? I want to do this type of thing, but I and I just feel like Wright Pierce from and maybe there's a lot going on that just doesn't come here ever, but I've never seen anything, any document from them, any all we've seen is that presentation that was like, yeah, it's a problem, we're going to keep bugging homeowners. it's a problem, we're going to keep bugging homeowners, um, chipping away at it, I just can, did they make a proposal to you or anything, or?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're having a plan, we're, for example, um, and we're, we're getting personnel from them to, to help us out there on the, in the street as well. Uh, for example, next week, I was going to announce that we want to go ahead and smoke the downtown.
Oh.
Area, um, because we haven't done that yet, we stayed out of, of.
Sure.
Main Street.
Sure.
But, uh, you know, we, we should go ahead and, and smoke test that to see if, uh, you know, there's, uh, roof leaders and that type of thing going into this.
Definitely, but what is, we have a, we have the smoke machine, and we have our own staff, what is Wright Pierce doing?
Well, it'll be, uh, two more people so that we can go from business to business with, without being there too long.
This all needs to be written up in a plan that, that we can read and say, this is why we're doing this, we know this, we don't know this.
Yeah, I think wastewater in general should, yourself or, and, or Wright Pierce, present us a plan of what you plan to do in what month, or, you know, whatever you think is, you know, and who's staffing what, because I'm happy to spend 80,000, we just want it spent, though.
Right.
On, on, on investigating the entire system, uh, you know, in, in the next fiscal year.
Right, and we may not need that.
Well, that's, that's fine, but, but it's just, don't want to budget 80,000 and find out we spent 20, and exaggerating, make a point, because we only had one meter, and we only had two people on staff that could do it, and we didn't want to use Wright Pierce. We need to, just to see, we've got to thrash this INI problem, especially to acquire you, Dave, you know it's not small, it's huge, and there's got to be some smoking guns out there, and we're just anxious to see the plan that's going to identify those over the next fiscal year.
Okay.
It seems to me, I mean, the way, the way I work on big, I mean, there, these are enormous contracts, but it, we, there's a task order that's, that's, that's sent, right, and say, okay, so next week, we're doing XYZ, and, and we have a result somewhere, and we can, then, you know, like every six months or whatever, we say, okay, we've done XYZ, these are the results we have, now we need to go.
Yeah.
Do ABC, because we don't know those things, and, you know, again, I don't think there's any issue about spending the money, but it's making progress towards solving this INI problem, and, and I also do understand that once we do one survey, we're going to discover that we need to do something else.
Oh, yeah.
I understand it's not a straight linear process, but.
Of course not.
I think when we have amounts, like, we're talking about $120,000 now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's, let's keep that as an action item, and let's, when you tell us when you're thinking, ready to bring it to the board for discussion, I didn't want to rush it, I want it done right.
Yeah.
We want it done right, okay. Capital improvements, that we, you know, we were in that already, but I think the big change there is the, is the INI, and the other one is the, I'm reading this right, the Pearl Street Pipe Manholes Park to?
Park to John Street.
Thank you. Park to Joe.
Section of, uh, Pearl is, uh, has been upgraded previously, so.
I see. This is what's being done in conjunction with the Pearl Street Improvement Project.
Right, yes.
Thank you.
But you're going to do everybody's laterals, right?
Yes, yeah, all the laterals to the side of the, to the side of the road.
When you say, are you going to, are you going to scope the laterals, or are you going to?
No, we're just going to change, change them all where we're at it.
Really?
Camera them, right?
Well, uh, the, the camera part comes into, uh, looking for INI on Pearl Street.
Right.
Yeah.
We, we know we have some of those.
Because to give, to give private property owners the ability to know that they need to change their lateral.
Right, yeah.
So, but we're going to do that on the other part of Pearl Street as well, right?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, to the, um, debt service, which is just the loan payment on the excavator, correct?
Yes.
No change. Use of reserves, which is, uh, the collection system, which, which is to offset the Pearl Street project?
Yes.
So we're just offsetting 200,000 out of the collection system reserve, which is shown below. That's the only use of reserves you have planned for the fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
And in terms of reserve balances, we have, well, we see we have in the, the following, as of, as of 2/28, February 28th, 2022, there's a, the six, or the dozen total, but, um, because again, the only use was the collection system reserve for Pearl Street, resulting in a total, well, we already skipped right by it, but a total, uh, expense budget of $1,880,248, correct? Which is a 11, almost 11% increase from FY '22. And you've seen what those numbers are. I'll have to discuss the, the user rates now, Dave, the user rates, you, could you discuss those briefly with us, please?
Yeah, the user rates, uh, in FY '22 is $8.23 per 100 cubic feet, and the FY '23 rate will be $9.13 per 100 cubic feet.
Based on that expense budget, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Mark.
Couple of questions. Number one, what's a normal household use? What's their, uh, usage?
Uh, let's see, I don't even remember that. It's, uh, two people would probably pay their minimum charge, would be 100,000 cubic feet per quarter, and so, you know, four people would be about 2,000.
So, so let's get them.
Half a gallon a day per person, right?
Hmm?
No, sorry.
Let's see.
10 gallons.
I.
10 gallons a day per person, I think, there's an international, um.
That's a substantial cost.
I'll do the math.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Anyway, you're proposing $9.13, which is, uh, whatever, that's a, uh, 90 cent increase per 100 cubic feet, correct?
Yes.
Did I do my math correctly?
Yeah.
Somebody uses 100,000 cubic feet, you said?
Uh, per quarter, right, three months.
Okay.
Yeah, what is that?
Divide, well, and then if you're target, if you're thinking rates, mark, just divide that by 100, and then multiply it by the, by the rate.
Right, sorry, it's 100 gallons per day per person.
100 what?
Gallons per day per person.
Yeah, and there's what?
That's what you use when you wash, eat.
Yep, yep.
Clean.
Yep.
Drink, it's, it's on, it's a, it's the national average, 100 gallons per day per person.
I think, uh, conversion from 100,000, or 1,000 cubic feet would be 7, 7,500 gallons.
Right.
Made in that ballpark.
Okay, and one other question I had, um, do you have a vision, you know, we're going through such specific things that, you know, everybody watching is going to get, you know, sort of, do you have a specific sort of plan, vision for like the next few years, or what you'd like to accomplish, what we'd like to, problems we'd like to solve, and how you think you'll get there? You know, obviously, the, the, the overflows are the big one.
Yes, that's definitely front and center.
Just, I call that question, just to finish, um, could you explain the wastewater INI fee paragraph that you got in here, then we'll answer your question, Mark? Just to explain what this FY '22 and FY '23 rates are for INI charges?
Right, yeah, that, uh, that, uh, if there's a new development going on, they have to pay an INI fee to offset the water that they're going to start sending to the sewer system. And then we can take that to, to, you know, fix the INI issue and, and make sure we have the capacity to, when a new development comes in, and that's all bait on, the, the, these numbers here are a, uh, construction number that's, uh.
Pretty standard.
Yeah, it's calculated every, every year, and they've been doing this since, uh, 1900, something like that.
And just for the public's benefit, FY '23 rate of $3.88 is applied to?
Well, this is, that goes into a, quite a formula to.
I know.
I should have brought it with me.
No, no, don't, we'd be here for an hour. Um, but it goes into a formula that basically charges the developer or the, the contractor for that, that chunk of money, which comes to the wastewater treatment bill.
Right, exactly.
All right.
And to answer Mark's question.
Yes, the answer, well.
There's no, on another question, so, average consumption is 100 gallon a day per person, there's 750 gallons in 100 cubic feet, so one person uses one cub, 100 cubic feet of water per week.
Good.
There you go.
Roughly. Thank you, Google.
Yes, comes in handy.
Again, to your question, Mark.
We're changing to metric.
Yeah, it's just interesting to look at the rates and have, you know, want to sort of drill it down for people to expect, what they have.
Well, I mean, if you're asking about, do you find what escalation of rates, kind of a reason?
Not just what people to expect, I mean, you know, I'm not on the, the system, so.
Right.
I'm just sort of curious.
Of course, yeah.
About what people, I'd like to know about it, because I'm making decisions affecting people.
Yeah, seems to me the, just another number for you, the, I think the $9.13 per 100 cubic feet, that if you look at one, um, one gallon of wastewater, how much does it cost to treat it? And that's, uh, I think it was 1.3 cents to treat it.
Now, if I remember correctly, um, from reports in the last few years, that we're, our fees are quite lower than a lot of other communities, is that still the case?
Mm-hmm.
I know it's changed a little bit since we, we made changes in how we're billing.
Right, that's a good question, I, I haven't seen, uh, Main Road Water Association usually does a survey of rates, and since the pandemic, they haven't, so it's been quite a few years since.
And it wasn't billing changes, it's because we're saving more money for.
Right.
We're trying to stabilize rates for when we actually are paying the debt back on the treatment plan upgrades.
Right, we're just plugged into the $9.13 already, so there isn't one, we, we ratchet it up year by year in the amount, so that it didn't go from seven to nine, 13 in one year. And that's what we prevented, but as.
We're in the $5 range.
We were in the 565.
Yeah, and I think now, because I looked at the, um, the chart that Dave presented back when, um, the Select Board was making a decision on.
Right.
How it was going to be funded, if it were, you know, going to be funded through ratepayers or taxpayers, and then.
Right.
Everybody realizing how low our rates were, and how they'd been kept pretty artificially low for years.
Right.
And we're, we're kind of now at a point where we're, we're in the average.
We're more at par.
In the average as of what the, what the rates were.
Yeah.
Pre-pandemic.
And Camden needs to remember that we're in that category of towns that doesn't have a lot of industry, because if you do have a lot of industry in your town, it changes, then rate dramatically.
Well, I guess, you know, Rockland's a really good example, half of their rates are paid by one customer, which is DuPont, so that's half of their rate base, so they're always going to have very low rates.
Right.
You know, in comparison to other comparable municipalities.
That's why they're less than $7.
Yeah.
That's why the comparison, yeah, I get it, but it's kind of tough unless the towns are apples and apples.
Right.
Et cetera, et cetera, but anyway, so the.
But if you think about what the wastewater does every day, it moves water compared to the, your electricity that just plugged in.
Moves electrons.
Electrons, but not.
They move faster, too.
Well, you know, I think, I, I look at wastewater treatment as, as a real service to me on a daily basis, like every time I open my faucet, I know my water is being treated.
You can actually see it, you can actually see it.
You can see it, it's very tangible.
You can feel it. So just FY, are there any other questions aboard on the wastewater budget, um, before I summarize? If not, I, I, go ahead, Allison, your question?
Budget, I can connect almost anything to the budget if I have to, but, I mean, it's wastewater project-related, to make sure that we have everything that we need, I guess, in the budget. Um, I was curious with, just like the facility upgrades that are happening, um, one of the things that the Planning Board talked about was removing, um, the fence to allow for people to get through and wildlife to get through, um, and that was part of the site plan review, um, like the site plan stipulations, and I know that probably will throw, you know, create some planning changes, is there anything going on with that in terms of trying to fence off just parts of the facility that need to be fenced off rather than the entire parcel?
Uh, no, that's not part of the upgrade, yeah, so we'd, we'd have to.
It's not in the budget.
Address that.
But, I mean, the, that was part of the Planning Board review.
I, I guess I misunderstood, I thought the, the fences would be up and, you know, the, the, uh, gates would be left open, but, so, apparently, I must have entered.
I mean.
Your question, Sophie?
If you're done?
Uh, is it a totally new topic that you're?
No, 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 I, I, I'm just curious, I would love to have like a, a completion update on, on the, on the upgrade, it's like, where are we? Because I have no, on the, on the overall project.
Yeah, okay. Would you like to take a, a tour?
I would love to take a tour, I've been waiting for you to invite me, I didn't want to interrupt you, because I know you're super busy, I would love to do that.
I think that would be a great idea, that's the best way to see it and feel it.
Yes.
It's worth a thousand words.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah.
But we also have, um, that Carrie, the inspector, I mean, has taken thousands of aerial photographs of the whole thing.
Yes.
It was really, he shared all of those with us the other day, and we used them for the annual report, and, I mean, it's pretty incredible, the arsenal there, so I think it would be good to do a presentation for the public to just, um, you know, I mean, could just be showing photos and having you say, oh, yeah, that's that, that's that, that's that.
Sure.
Um, it's, seeing it from that perspective is sometimes even better, I think, than being right there.
I think for the public it is for sure, but for Sophie's point, I think you should do both, I think.
Right.
You know, or anybody wants to see it, I think.
Budget Committee asked that quite a bit, too.
Oh, yeah, well, I think that's a good idea, anybody wants to physically see it, because it's a better feel, touch and feel, but those may not be as technical, but the public thing, I think Allison's idea, we'll try to squeeze that on an agenda in the next meeting or whenever we get a chance to squeeze the agenda, it's on our list to do exactly that.
You know, start right from the beginning and where we are now.
Yeah, I think it's important, people, I know what, the money gets applied to rate users, but there's a lot of them here, and Camden, I'm sure they'd be interested in seeing where their money's going, so.
Sure.
And I have a personal interest, because my, my father used to build them in France, so.
Oh.
Used to build what?
Wastewater treatment.
Wastewater treatment plants, in Paris, yeah.
Yeah.
I do want to go back just 60 seconds on the future, when you think some of the big problems may be solved, and what we're looking at, you know, two, five years down And what we're looking at, you know, two, five years down the line. You know, when, when's the plant upgrade going to be finished, do you think?
Uh, the, uh, finish date is, uh, February or March, 2023.
Twenty-three.
Okay, so we're getting there.
Yeah, very, it's getting close.
Yeah, okay. And timeline on maybe finding some of the big INI problems and fixing the overflows?
That's what we're going to have a presentation on.
I've seen quite a bit of water this spring, and I don't want to jump the gun, but, uh, I, I think we found a couple more big sources.
That'd be great.
That's all I'm going to say.
We're going to look forward to this, we're going to look forward to the good news.
This is good. And especially, well, that's the last question I have. We've had some very large rain events.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, more than in the past.
Right.
And how well are we prepared for continuation of those and getting a little bit worse? Are we going to catch up?
Yeah, we, we have to, yeah.
I don't think we're well-prepared, though, right now.
Probably not, probably not. Tomorrow night, we have the wastewater budget on the consent agenda. I mentioned after the board knows that. And, and with that, um, since the, I haven't heard any changes, that'll be for the, uh, $1,880,248 budget.
Okay, so following up on the fence, um, it looked like they were going to, is there some fence activity happening right now? Are they taking down a fence, or?
We're replacing the, uh, the, the gates and some of the fence on the, the upper side.
Okay. So that would probably always need to stay anyway.
Yeah, you're, you're into process, you know, open tanks, open aeration tanks, that type of thing.
Um, but you're not replacing any of the stuff that goes right down to the river? Um, it just seems, I mean, we've tried to say, kind of repeatedly, that we, the Riverwalk's supposed to go through there. The, you know, the planning board discussed this as part of the site plan review. I know that it's a, a change for you all, but is there any kind of thinking towards how we're going to get there to the point where it's this, you know, in every comprehensive plan, every, we have, it says the Riverwalk is supposed to go through there, but it seems like we're just barricading everything off and kind of holding the line. Are you guys starting to think about how we might be able to rearrange things so that just the tanks and all of that dangerous stuff could be fenced off?
Right, right.
And people could walk along that road, or like, because it's just going to keep coming up, that it's going to be a continued source of frustration for people, like the pathways committee and people that dead-end at the Riverwalk. And we're going to have to sort of be saying, this is what we need to do in order to get to the point where people could walk through there.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, that, that's what we need to do, is put a fence, uh, around the aeration tanks and the clarifiers, open, open tanks full of water.
Okay, so you do have kind of like a vision for how that might be workable?
Yes.
Do we, is there any reason, it seems like since they're doing all this work now, it would be the time to say, okay, if we're going to do this, we need to add, you know, X amount to the budget to create this system? Just rather than go, rather than getting to the total end of the project and then going back?
Yeah, that would be done, uh, new fencing would be done at the end.
Okay.
Just because there's areas there that we're digging.
Right, so you want to keep people out for now.
And, yeah.
Right, that makes sense.
That'd be in the end of it, anyway.
Will you let us know if there's a critical point that comes up where we need to rearrange funding or make a decision about something, or?
Yeah, and I'll look at the cost, too. What do it cost to put the fences in that area?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
David, thanks for your help. And like I said, tomorrow, we'll just be going through formal approval, uh, using the consent agenda since we know what the number is.
Okay.
Thank you, my friend.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, we'll look, we'll look forward to discussing the stuff with you and Ray Pearson, very near term.
And now with the, I should have said this earlier, but with the revenue stuff, I mean, I notice they use, they, they group all revenue together just as user fees, but we obviously have a significant situation.
We do, we do.
Um, with the.
Right.
So that's kind of like an elephant in the room that needs to be.
Well, it needs to be, we, we need to discuss it and.
Because it's based on use, on, on the usage from last year, right?
Well, yeah, in the total, obviously, when you come up to a rate, you're using the total number of, estimation of how many cubic feet.
Right, so what they're doing is that they're taking last year's rate, they must add a, a, they've left. They must increase a percentage because it increases every year, probably.
That's, that's a good question. I think that typically you're, you're taking the flow you had from last year. And, and probably, I mean, slight increase maybe in dividing it into the expenses come up with the rate.
That, that gives you the user rate.
That's correct.
But then, like, if you have major users not paying their bill or something.
If we have an issue where we don't get paid for something, yeah, that's, you know, when a certain amount of water's not paid for at the, at the full rate, that, that's what you're referring to. Then that's, that's another ballgame. We have, we, we not there yet.
To make a, the, the rate that is being charged to, to Rockport.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean.
Their inter-local agreement has expired.
You've got two options.
Yeah.
You can cut the budget by that much, what you know you're going to get.
Right.
Or you can increase the rate and have Camden ratepayers.
Exactly.
Pay for that difference.
Exactly.
I mean, I just think we should talk about that.
No, when we get to the point where we know the answers to that question, we'll have to revise the budget.
But what do we do when we come to, do we have enough in reserves somewhere so that, like, for when we come to the end of this year, for example, and Camden's rate is all, you know, every, the rate has been.
You're talking about cash flow, or you're talking about?
Yeah, I get, from a, is, are we fine from a cash flow perspective?
I don't see a cash flow problem.
No, we're fine with the cash flow.
That's what I thought. That's why we're, we're in a good, we're in a good place to, if you were, you know, you're right, Allison, if we're in a place where money in the bank was an issue, you're absolutely right. You better be really careful, but we're not there.
And we won't be next year either?
No, the amount of money we're talking about here is not huge in terms of the total.
Right, which is part of the central issue.
Yet, 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 yet. No, you, but that's a good point. That's why it has to be, that's what we have to resolve. And what was, like, well put, by the way, you have two options to play with. Right now, the option we're suggesting is things are going to, okay, and it's going to be $9.13. It may not be. May not be.
Right, because we can't go and just read it, just people's rates out and then start based on a few not paying. Also, do we make, how do we monitor that everybody else is paying, too? It feels like we have this, does main water, why, does main water tell us when some?
Yeah, we have, we have a sewer lien program that addresses that.
But we, we don't, we, we haven't voted on the, do we vote like, every semester?
Quarterly, you commit.
No, we've only, we've only voted once since I've been in, you know?
No, I don't think so. I think twice. But you're talking, that's, you know, that's kind of a formality thing. The bills are already gone out, and, and while you're, you're approving a quarterly or six month.
This is a recurring issue. I, I've always wanted to talk more about it, so.
Well, it's what it is. It's, it's, you know, it's a.
Yeah, I remember, it's, it's interesting you say this, and I know this, this isn't budget-related strictly, but, um, we are going to propose a change to the sewer use ordinance, so you don't have to vote on the rates quarterly.
Who's not after the fact?
Good.
Exactly, three months after the fact.
Well, I mean, you know, you're already, you're already voting on it when you vote on the budget, and then to have to go back and vote quarterly.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, the main change I want to see, okay, I'm going to say it in public, now I'll go on the record.
Get the microphone a little closer, make it hard for you to hear you.
Because, because the sewage rate is a rate applied to my consumption, to my water consumption, send me one bill.
Oh, no, oh, Sophie, you don't know what you're.
No, but seriously, because why is there, why is there like a four or five week lag between the two bills?
Because one is a private company.
Don't line up. So the water company has their own billing cycle that's different than the towns. We contract with them to bill for us.
Oh, so they're not, okay.
Yeah.
Now, if you want to sign, if you want to sign a accounting job, we can find one for you. Anyway, we have to move on. We have to move on to our second admin agenda, which is the Snow Bowl budget. And we have Ms. Ward here with sunglasses on her head.
Yes, talk about snow, beautiful weather that we have tonight.
Oh, that similarly, um, perhaps you can take us through the elephants by, by section, the ones you want to bring our attention to, please.
Sure, sure. Um, just overall, I'd like to say that I, I typically keep the Snow Bowl budget pretty conservative. Um, we are going up in some lines.
Just a little jiggle.
Just keep going.
Okay, that's okay. Obviously, wages are up across the board, as you all know. Um, our liability insurance, um, spiked a bit on us last budget season, and we foresee it being similar this year.
This general liability?
Yep. Um, mainly because of our skier visits are up, and that's what it's based on, so it's a good problem to have, I suppose. Um, we also have quite a bit of, um, electricity increases in all, across the whole board. And as well, you guys know that ski area equipment is very expensive to maintain and to keep in running order. So our equipment lines, maintenance lines are, um, pretty steady there, so. But if you'd like to go through, I don't.
Yeah, let's go through the, um, uh, maybe, perhaps we'll go through the expense part first.
Yep, sure.
And then we can do revenue later, because you, that's always, that's my suggestion if the board preferred to a different way, that's. I think we'll start with, uh, Snow Bowl admin. I believe that's the first expense budget, Beth?
Yep, and again, wages are really the only thing that are somewhat increasing a little bit, um, in the general liability insurance. And the software.
You did take a hit there, my God. It says 20, $23,000.
Yep.
That's what it is.
Um, I did ask them, uh, our renewal is in August, which is really bizarre for this meeting. I wish we could have a renewal prior to this meeting so I could give you a better sense, but I did ask, uh, them to give me a quote on some different deductibles.
Got it.
Um, I think we're currently at $5,000 deductible, which I think is pennies, and we could definitely up that a little bit.
Absolutely.
Have some savings there. So hopefully, I can report that to you later, but.
Okay.
Any questions in admin, insurance?
No, it's, it's a good question. I think you should ask it.
I do have a good question.
You do.
Yeah, only good questions, please.
Audra has me under control here, like, don't ask this.
No, let's, let's, let's move on to lodge, lodge.
No, no, Mike, I, I do have a good question, sorry.
Good question?
Yeah, I do, so.
Very good question.
Okay, ask your good question.
The, the Snowball has its own health insurance, and I was asking.
Not health.
Mm-mm, general liability.
Well, we do have, as town employees, we're covered in health insurance.
Oh, so you're part of the town?
Yes.
Okay, the liability is different, of course.
But the general liability, that's a good question. And Beth can.
So in the winter, uh, we are much higher risk than we are as parks and recreation.
Sure.
And the Snowball needs additional insurance for the activities that happen there in the winter.
Okay.
And that's the one with Beth, I think that's a great idea. Perhaps the deductibles might be a little low.
Yes.
Thank you.
But in terms of the health insurance, it's.
It's town.
Six months of Holly and I in this admin one, and the other ones are five and seven months for the parks crew, and.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Lodge maintenance shop.
Yep, uh, so no, no big changes here. Again, electricity. Um, I have seen a rise in electricity costs, costs, and I don't know if it's because of CMP's increases and/or us with our Siemens projects. Um, we don't, we're not paying for heating oil anymore, but our electricity is going up.
Sorry, I was optimizing this for, so people could see.
Oh, I'm on, I'm on page, um, 78-05.
What are we using instead of oil?
We have heat pumps.
Heat pumps.
That's a, you know, it's a, kind of a catch-22 right now, because electric rates have gone through the roof and because their natural gas has gone through to produce power.
Keep on, one more.
You know, I think, I feel, I, I don't, personally don't feel electric rates are going to go down. I think they're going to get worse, if not stay with where they are right now.
And I have to say, I think the oil's gone up even worse, so I think you're better off.
Well, that very well be, but when we've spent almost $14,000 in this one account, uh, year to, uh, actual to date, and the year's not over, and we're proposing seven, it doesn't feel right. What, what do you think?
You're going to see it even more when we get to Alpine, I mean.
I mean, it's, it's a tough one. Again, Dave's budget, he substantially increased his electricity budget because of experience, and I, now, we can talk about it more, but when you're.
Well, now that we're, I'm sorry, now that we're here in May, in May.
Yeah.
I mean, when I was doing this, it was January.
Yeah.
And we hadn't seen some of these numbers come in, yet Audra did crank a little bit.
Oh.
But I don't know if we're, I think we're still too conservative.
Yeah, I would, I'd recommend that you bring it up even more, because I, I don't think we fully understood what running the geothermal heat pumps would cost us.
Electricity.
Yeah, because one, we didn't know what the rates would be.
Right.
And what the impact of the rate increase would be.
Right.
And two, just not knowing what exactly the, um, the load was going to be, because we had never had a season where we had run them.
We should double this, we should put it at 15,000.
I have a question about that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we get higher rates because of the electricity use for the snowmaking. Does the rate, is there a separate account for the other electricity, or is that, so it's not part of the same thing?
I think we have, I have 10 accounts at least, maybe 12.
Oh, maybe more than that.
Because you have 100,000 for Alpine, so that's just for the lodge.
This is a pre, yeah, this is a precursor.
This is the lodge and the maintenance.
Yeah.
Just making sure that we're not going to get hit, because they really hit you on that one.
Yeah, it's actually when we turn on the three-phase for the pumps.
Yeah.
And we get a demand charge, because it's like in the middle of summer when everyone's using their, yeah.
Well, I guess it pretends a philosophy as we go through the various departments, do we want to suggest we maintain more, you know, closer to, for in this case, 14,000, probably.
15, because we're, the year's not down. We're at 13,884.
I mean, it's a flip of a coin. It's a little bit of a pressure.
It's pretty minimal right now.
Right, and, and actually, beginning in April, we switch all the coding over to parks.
Yeah.
So there's also, we're going to be paying for electricity out of parks from April through June.
But that's already in the town, but.
Right, but, but if I look, yeah.
So we're not going to be spending any more.
No.
On this.
Okay, so 14,000, I mean.
I mean, it still is significant.
14.
But I think 14, 14, yeah.
So just, Jody, we should adjust that one, too. If we're going to keep track here, we should adjust, if, if the board agrees, 7,005 to 15,01 to $14,000.
Yes.
I would agree.
Do you want to vote? No, you just, we were just agreeing on this, okay.
The intent here would be to get to a, a budget agreement, like with wastewater, and then, soon we can, then we can prove it tomorrow night.
Right.
Agree.
Got that, Jody?
Yep.
Anything else in this account you want to highlight?
So there's equipment maintenance that, that was.
For the building.
Right, but so it's budgeted at 35, but we've only spent 350.
That could, that could be just a coding thing. It could be building maintenance below. It could have been coded wrong there.
I'm just looking at the big deltas, that's why.
Yeah. Like new vacuum cleaners and things that we need.
Big stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we're on to Alpine.
The big one.
That's the big one.
So.
On this budget, we, we added staff last year, as I recall, to the Alpine, didn't we? Didn't we add staff positions?
We did, full-time position, yeah.
That's already in '22.
Yep. Um, there is one discrepancy, discrepancy, um, under the terrain park wages. We have 50, it must just be a typo.
Okay.
Oh, nice try.
Yeah.
Looks like we're missing a zero there.
Yes, we are. And that would mean I wouldn't be able to pay Steve Bigley, so. Yeah.
So that should be 15,000?
Yes.
Okay. Good catch.
Yeah.
Well, again, any other highlights in that, the first half of this thing?
Uh, you know, just, just looking at vehicle repairs and maintenance, um, again, the crew did a great job keeping it under 40 this year, but you never know. Um, and we did have the, their emergency on the tracks, on the grooming machine that we had.
That came out of here?
No, that did not come out of here. It came out of a reserve.
Of general fund.
What's in veh, what's in vehicle?
That's everything mountain vehicles, groomers, um, ATVs, mobiles. Yep, all of those.
Okay.
Do you have a list somewhere of like, all the equipment that we have?
Absolutely. We, we deal with it, um, every year with our insurance company. And then, um, for emergency plan for the town, all of our equipment that could be used in case of an emergency is also on those lists.
So I would love to see that list, yeah.
Just to like have as an, I know you probably aren't ever sure what to, what to add to these packets to make them like really big, but sometimes just like adding a bunch of that stuff, like, to this would help us for when we.
You have that list, don't you? She sends that to us every year to go over any, if, if we've dumped any equipment, if we got anything new, so we have.
Do you keep track of like?
All town.
This one needs its.
Yeah, so the.
Carburetor replaced, and this one needs its, yep, like, new tires, yeah, all of that. You know, this one we think is going to last five more years, or.
Well, there's an amortization schedule for this equipment, right?
Yeah, we have also a depreciation schedule for our assets.
Depreciation would be, if you could say, that would be cool.
Life of.
Yeah, because that's helpful. So I don't understand how we amortize those.
Is the useful life versus the calculated life them different?
And user.
The net present value of the equipment.
Depending on who's using it.
That's the one I want.
I get it. Um, again, here, a couple of accounts, there are electricity mentioned.
Yes.
Um, not the least of which is the big one, which is snowmaking, which has been in the order of 80K for a couple of years, looks like. Now we're at 125, probably all paid for by now, I would think.
Yes.
So the 100 and the one just above it, which is, which is small, general electricity, and that's not huge. But the big one, um, it feels like the 100,000 should be a little bit more. I, you know, I just don't see it going down. And in particular, because, now that this, snowmaking electricity is only the 500 horsepower motors and all the stuff associated with that piece only?
Correct.
Okay.
So there's, there's three accounts that get charged to that snowmaking line when they're being run. The pumps, the comp.
There are three accounts.
Compressors, and then the, um, the pump house, yeah.
Okay. Question. Um, you rent the, we have, we own one, uh, snowmaking compressor. Do we run that after, ever after we've returned the other ones? Okay, so that continues, right.
We can, yes.
So maybe the snowmaking wants to be around 120?
Yeah.
I, you know, I hate to keep.
Well, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it.
That's good news. That's good news. So, Jody, then seventy fifteen fifteen oh one, I'm sorry, fifteen oh four.
Sure, one twenty instead of one twenty-five?
Yep, one twenty-five.
I thought you said you didn't think it was going to go down.
Sweat.
I thought you said you didn't think it was going to go down.
I don't.
But we can, we can, we can be smart and make sure we time when we turn, turn things on and make sure we clear testing with CMP so that we don't get charged for any of that as well.
If you feel better with one twenty-five, I think it's no worries, but that's fine. One twenty-five is what we spent, then that's probably
I think you're right.
It's probably not going to go down.
And especially is, if we have the need to make more snow, we've had to make more snow every year. It's not, it's not like all of a sudden, I wish we were going to get some big snowfalls, but we have to be prepared if we don't.
Correct.
I mean, you guys, it seems like you try to do the smart thing no matter what anyway, so.
You get that, January?
It's the one twenty-five because you were like, oh, we don't have to be smart this year.
Jody, you get that one twenty?
You're already trying to
No, again, I'm doing this budget in January, so I'm not seeing these actual numbers until now, you know, so.
That's good news. All right.
That's part of the problem with a lot of things, like micro solid waste when we're doing that budget. It's just like so far ahead of time that it really, it's hard, like we could
We lost a month.
Give them another crack at it.
We lost a month, remember, this year because of the
Yeah, there's that part with the, we can blame a lot on that for sure, but
I think it's really just the timing of the whole budget cycle is really difficult to plan ahead because you don't have good actuals when we start budgeting.
Right.
I mean, Beth and, Beth and Dave have a little bit of leeway on that, but the general fund budget, it's always just a best guess at that point in time.
So the year-to-date for this one are
Up to date.
Yeah, these are through like a week ago.
Oh, okay. So then maybe it would be good to go through and adjust it, some of the other stuff. But you probably end up feeling like you're like stuck with what you submitted to the Budget Committee and all that stuff, so you don't go back.
Well, I know this, this is, this, I know that we always get to this point with the Select Board, and we, we can make changes because of what kind of budget it is, so.
I think, you know, the useful conversation to have, you know, earlier in the year, like in, you know, March, February, March is the it's the bigger policy level issues, like what do we, you know, what do we want to achieve in terms of capital purchases or projects or
I agree.
You know, different programs or initiatives, that's, I think that's more important for us to know
Absolutely.
in, you know, February, March than you guys having this sort of finer detail that, that you need, but the Budget Committee doesn't necessarily need.
I don't even feel like I need that. It feels silly for me to look through here and be like, Beth, are you sure you got enough here? Like, I'd rather, you know, they just
So I have a question. At the last time you were before us, we talked about snowmaking equipment and purchasing instead of lease. And we were going to revisit that again because we have the, the lease equipment here in the budget. But I'm still sort of curious about, we should talk again about if it makes sense to do the purchase instead of the leasing.
I assume we just haven't gotten there in the budget yet. Is that correct?
It's, yes, it's later.
Okay, because I just saw the equipment lease there.
It will, I mean, it will impact that line.
Yeah.
So we've kind of kept both in for the purposes of that discussion.
Well, I'm just curious, medical insurance, is that is that health insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
For our full-time folks that are in this
Just want to be sure.
It's a dangerous game.
Well, no, just health insurance is health insurance. Employees get all, get all that kind of thing. The other question is on, so far
Are you suggesting the name should be changed?
Yeah, the name should be changed to health insurance. It's not, I mean, medical, we use it every place else as health insurance. I get confused.
Got it.
But
That jumped.
But, but yeah, because you have an actual to date of twenty-three thousand and you're budgeting fifty?
I'm sorry?
I must, you have an actual of twenty-three thousand.
But we're not then, but forty-three last year, so.
Right, and it's also, it's also based on, we have employees who change plans based on family needs throughout the year. So this is based on current plans that our employees have.
But so the issue is that this line is not just for the snow season, it's year-round?
Mm hmm, no.
Just the snow season.
Just for seven months, uh, sorry, five months out of the year.
Because it's ten thousand dollars.
I guess the question that Sophie's asking is if we spent twenty-three thousand, why would we want to budget fifty?
Well, and what they're saying is, last year, we had employees that didn't take certain plans, and it's Well, we've, we've had turnover.
Yeah, it's single versus family plan, what the employee pays.
Understand. All right.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Because we budgeted forty-five and only spent
Forty-five and twenty-two, and in the actuals for twenty-one, we're twenty-two, twenty-three, so.
Yeah, we had, we had turnover where the staff that we had budgeted for, I don't think that they were there to even use the health insurance. Is that correct?
You don't feel the fifty's heavy, is what you're saying?
No.
These are actual, these are actual employees and their plans, plus five percent.
Forecast out.
Yes.
And you don't carry forward, that just rolls into everything else, so it doesn't really
Correct.
Okay. You're spending too much on pens.
Why?
I'm just looking at the office supply line.
Oh, no.
You've also kept your budget for gasoline, diesel, and oil lower, and you had a substantially higher cost, and I don't know that that's going down.
I agree, but again, that was prior to the crank and the increase, so.
Yeah, Mark, that's a good point. I think you've got, you've got to expect all of these to remain
Put another five thousand there.
And that might want to be twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
What are mountain building supplies?
One at a time, but what are you going to, no, it's okay.
Twenty thousand in that line, in that line?
I think so.
Fourteen, Jody, that's if you approve.
Gasoline, diesel, oil.
Show up for twenty thousand. It's not going to go down.
Mountain buildings, was that your question?
Oh, mountain buildings, supply, yeah.
So like fire hydrants, a little heater, sometimes we have to replace the heaters for the people that are in the, the little shacks throughout the mountain, like a top shack for both the double and the triple. We have heaters, we have high, you know, they have to have
So not, like all those little buildings and stuff, is there a fund for taking care of them and
Um, well, that would, it could be equipment repair maintenance as well. I mean, it's building ma, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find it with my eyeballs right now.
Yeah.
What line is that one?
Equipment
Mountain buildings, there, I see it.
Which one are you on?
Seven five.
Mountain building, like you're building a mountain, a mountain building.
Like a train park.
But then I saw the, and I thought maybe that's the train park, but then the train, now I'm, I have to say this because of my kids and their friends who really like the train park and think that for many kids, it's the reason that they go to the snowball and that there is not enough emphasis on the terrain park, that that should be a first priority to get running. Instead, it's like, they don't get that done until all the other trails are ready or, I'm just repeating stuff I hear from eleven-year-olds. It's not my own opinion, but it did, you know, enough of them say that, that it's like, why, why aren't we investing more in that? Because for a lot of kids, it's the only reason they even have a pass and
Can I, can I second that? I've heard that too, that, you know, for a lot of the skiers, that's a really important part, especially for the younger skiers.
Yeah, and snowboarders and
Fall down and don't break themselves usually when they fall, so.
Recommend needing a budget change?
Let me, let me, let me talk about it first. So we do go to the ski club for a grant every year, and part of their, part of their their interest is to give to the train park this coming season. So we are asking, I think it's between three and five thousand dollars from the club to give us money so we can build some more elements. And that's, I believe that's three new elements
Oh.
that Steve has in mind.
And we also have a three thousand dollar donation that's being held in reserve, too.
Yeah, for terrain park specific.
Oh, great.
And it, again, it's a juggling act every year. I wish I could, I wish I could educate the kids more because they're not reading my constant contact emails or, you know, the newsletter necessarily. But, you know, when snowmaking is happening, all hands are on deck, and that's that project that's getting done. And then it's about pushing it out and grooming it out and buttering the mountain like we do every winter to get it open. And then we focus on tubing and terrain park and other things. So I wish we could do it sooner, but it's usually, that's the progression for us.
Insta and TikTok and they'll
Yeah, maybe we should do a TikTok on it.
A TikTok, put a TikTok, no, seriously, and have them
Well, I can just assign the emails as an assignment to, I don't know, I'm trying to, we're trying to stay away from TikTok.
Could be fun, though. It could be fun.
On Insta.
On TikTok for
Budget, Mark, give him one person.
Yeah, to ask the question about it, even though you're going to get money from the ski club, and of course, that's, you know, you hope they're going to give you the money. Would more money for the terrain park, a small increase, help?
Sure, sure.
Steve says we can always use more money for the terrain park.
Spectator's saying no.
Well, it's interesting when I hear, you know, the things you hear about from general people, terrain park, terrain park. It's, it's a big thing for kids.
I told him he and his friends should get together and fundraise, but, or he could show up at one of these meetings or something.
What would be really beneficial if they want to fundraise is fundraise for lights on Northeastern, and it would be a lovely home for the terrain park.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that underneath the chairlift?
Uh, part of Northeastern is underneath the chairlift.
A little part.
But the wide part of Northeastern where we could really fit the terrain park in, and the general public would still be able to, but we need lights.
So a few years ago, you spent double, you spent twenty-four hundred dollars on the terrain park. Why so much that year in, you know, would it make, you've never really increased the budget. Would it make a difference if we added another thousand in, say?
But you have six thousand in reserve.
Yeah, I, I think we're okay, Mark.
They have seven thousand for the terrain park this year.
I, I think we're good with the plan that we have going forward.
Okay.
More employees to be able to carry out the plan.
They get beat up about, and I want to
No, but the issue is not more elements, the issue is having more staff to, to manage it while we do snowmaking, so.
Get it open soon.
And that's, that's, yeah.
But more staff to get it ready every morning.
Right, that's, that's the issue, it's not the elements.
Let's move on to the bargain nationals.
Oh.
I think that's next. Skip by something, which I usually do.
Line from my toboggan. The winning one.
The winning one.
We didn't get the winning one. I have an inside now. We'll have the winning one for next year.
Good. Audra will be back on that.
I'm taking care of it.
Toboggan.
Just here, just part of your time or whatever it's been.
What are you saying, Jody?
I've been told that
You don't want to, you don't
No, I'm supposed to be on the toboggan as well, so.
Yeah, yeah, she's not
I'm getting off.
Okay, so wages.
That's the, the part of Holly or your time.
And, and it's actually some of the extra crew that's like up there.
Oh, okay.
You know, manhandling each team through the
Strapping people down, or
Strapping them down, telling the instructions. So pretty much the equipment rental piece is up a little bit, but you can go back to FY twenty. We spent that, that was the most normal year that we had prior to the pandemic.
What are you renting?
So we rent all kinds of things. We get porta-potties for the weekend. We get hay, we get
I see, I see.
Yeah, it's the stuff to run the actual event. It's making the signs, no parking on Hosmer Pond Road and
Enough?
It's enough.
Why, why, why did parking go up? Oh, I guess it's about the same as it's been.
It's for, it's for re, doing the baseball field that got ruined by people parking on it this year.
It's made me so sad.
Me too.
Well, it was awful.
I saw so many cars getting stuck in there. It was just a bad, bad timing.
The grass is growing.
Is it?
I can report that.
Good.
But another, another
Don't mow it until June.
We're not mowing, we're not, we're not touching, but we're going to seed it again just to touch up any little bald spots that might have gotten washed away.
Sure.
What kind of a policy do we have about fertilizer use out there?
It has to be organic.
Good.
If we use it, we haven't used anything yet.
Has even just organic fertilizer, I mean, I don't have to tell you about the pond and the, I mean, so anything that we do that adds to the, like nutrient loading, they are
Oh, you can have, you can have vegetable compost that has no
Our plan this week is to hydro
You weren't here for the algae blob, sorry.
This plan this week is we're going to hydroseed it only in the areas that got damaged.
I see.
So, and the, and the thought process on that is we don't have a way of watering the field except for to bring in the truck from Public Works that we could spray with, the hydroseeder would just water, which would be cumbersome. And we don't want to ruin the field by driving on it more, so.
Hmm, it just
Yep.
I mean
It's growing, it's happy. Yeasts are pooping on it, there's some fertilizer.
Great, so I mean, it just, it's easy to say, we haven't had any problems there for a few years. But it feels like that's when sometimes, and we have, I mean, there was really unpleasant when it was really all most of us talked about for a little while. I know that we can't a hundred percent prevent it, but but we, I think not using fertilizer there as much as possible is
Difficult for sure.
Yeah.
Onto rental shop.
Okay. So the only big change here is that one of our full-time employees is now considered the rental shop manager, which has been a breath of fresh, fresh air for me because I have someone internal that's actually overseeing it, making sure things are getting done, because usually it's been a seasonal, seasonal employees over there. But Kyle's been doing a great job, he's, you know, he's stepped up, he has been doing it for several years, but this year, he's, his wages are actually coming out of here.
So he's a full-time employee?
Yep.
But part-time working in the rental shop in the winter, is that true?
Well, so his, for sixteen weeks, Jody, is that correct? Sixteen weeks, he's rental shop only, Rochelle can't use him for anything.
Okay.
Rochelle does, Rochelle does go work with him.
Yes, Rochelle, Rochelle's very cross-trained. She can do anything at the mountain now.
I don't suggest any change, but his health benefits are up on the big, big Alpine budget someplace?
Yes, probably. Health, health didn't get
No sense slicing the cake, do you?
No, no.
All right, there are some small challenge numbers, but they're not big enough in my opinion to chase.
Correct. I will say, with the issues that everybody saw with freight and everything, we didn't get the gear that we purchased last March for this ski season until March.
March.
So we have, we're going to hopefully have like a double case of equipment, which is going to be really nice, so.
Onto
Capital improvements.
Thank you. I thought I was going too fast, and I missed one.
So we do have a piston bully that we're still paying on until twenty twenty-six.
What is a piston bull, or it's a groomer?
Groomer machine, yep. And this is our, our four hundred Park Pro, which is really the, the machine that does all of the train park elements. It's smaller, it can, it can maneuver things a lot easier than our larger six hundred.
Right.
And next budget, or maybe in two budgets, we'll probably want to see a new, new to us groomer in, in this, so.
His personal property restoration.
So, so wait, what is that on the groomer? So how many groomers do we have?
We have three.
And so, and the life expectancy of those groomers, like what, fifteen years?
Uh, it depends, it depends.
Like every five years, we need to buy a new one?
It's, a lot of the issues that we see are the hydraulics and the pumps on them, and just they need to be maintained. And when they go to Lewiston, which is where the local Casbora dealer is, because Casbora is in Germany. So a lot of parts and things, that's why they're so expensive, but they're very costly. We sent our six hundred three years ago
Yes.
to Lewiston, and it was like forty thousand dollars for like an overhaul on the whole machine. But it, it gives us another five, you know, five to seven years of life to it.
For a machine that knew was cost five hundred thousand dollars?
Half a million.
I see. That's, that's the kind of numbers I would love to have. So, so I understand how much it costs, how to buy them, to maintain them. How long do they live?
Yeah.
They live, you know, so, so I can understand what we're buying, because this is not giving me, it's just because this is not giving me, it's just.
The big picture. Um, so really, our 600 and our 400 are really the only two machines that are actually grooming on the mountain. We have a 200, uh, which, I don't remember when we got that one.
Do you use it?
We can use it to haul things, but it does not till.
Oh.
Does not till anymore. Um, the plan, when we were going to buy a newer groomer for us, we were going to trade in the six and the two.
I see.
Trade in like you would your, your vehicle at home.
Of course, of course.
And get some money for it. Ever since I've been here at the Snowball, we've only got new to us grooming machines. We've never had a brand-new machine.
Right.
Some of the big skiers get brand-new, they run them for two or three years, and then they trade up. And we are lucky when we can get our hands on one of those.
On one of these, because they have relatively low mileage.
Yep, correct.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to be shopping for one in the next couple of years, hopefully.
Again, that table.
Okay.
Does the Snowball have an operations manual, like a whole big document that's, like for micro solid waste, we have one, and we, we have to pay somebody to do that?
We have pieces of that, that we have to do for the insurance, the general liability insurance. Um, and of course Patrol has a manual for their lift evacuations and all of that. So we have pieces, it's something that I wanted to do over the years to add it to one big thing. So if someone is like, what happens when this happens?
Right. That's like, I mean, we paid CVMAR, and we have to, we have to pay somebody to do it, but it might be worth paying somebody to do that for you guys. Obviously, it would be work for, for you two, but.
Yep, yep, we, we, we're talking about a preventative maintenance plan, you know the terminology. And if you, this comes down to that wrestling between buying new, but not buying new, and increasing maintenance costs.
Absolutely, and the warranties, the warranties could be huge to us in some sense.
The warranties, yeah, they only last so long, too, and they only repair certain things, but that's where the preventative maintenance thing, you have to determine in my mind whether or not the machine is, it's annual maintenance cost. You shouldn't wait for it to have a problem to fix it, to refurbish a groomer every single year, you know, and put that in the budget, if that's appropriate, with Snowmobile, whatever it is. And, and that was, I think, we could probably fund some preventative help Beth and company to develop a preventative maintenance plan. Program for her to enforce. And that's, I'm, can we find somebody around here that can do that, help her put that kind of thing together? And we, we, we have, we have reserve funds in the general fund, use it for that.
I agree, I would support that completely.
The other, the other thing that we have, and this is something that I'm, all year round I'm thinking about, is the foundation. They have a certain amount of money as an endowment that they allow to grow.
Oh, we said foundation, I was thinking of the building.
Yeah.
I was like, oh no, what's wrong with you?
In the history of them, they've, they've donated enough for us to buy new Snowmobiles or new, new equipment that we need to buy that doesn't hit the town. Um, so I'm, we're always thinking about those smaller pieces of things that we can ask the foundation to help with.
It's just, I look at a ski area as a machine. It's a factory, commercial machine, and you've got to do preventative maintenance, or if you've got to do it under plan, yeah, you're going to spend a little more, you might want to, but it's better in the long run than to put the whole thing on your shoulder and your team, it's unfair. So I think I would recommend that we take a look at it, helping them put together, get some help, put together a preventative maintenance plan, and take it out of the general fund. We have reserves for it in the Snowball.
Uh.
We don't?
Well, we spent, we spent on the groomer track, there was 50,000.
What did we spend it on?
On the groomer track.
Was 50,000?
It was 47,860 or 47.
What do we have left?
We have like.
We have left, you know?
Every year.
You don't, I mean, is, is it a few thousand?
It's like 3,000 or 4,000.
Should be enough to do it.
Really?
Yeah, it doesn't, if, if, if the information is available.
Maybe the foundation would like to pay for it, they like to do things like that.
Contribute to it.
Contribute to it.
Um.
And, and it's not difficult to do.
No, we have $1,972.
Not enough.
Because we spent 47,900 on the, on the track.
It's not enough, it's not enough. I don't know, you need to decide whether that's something to put into the plan for the future. I, I worry about a high liability operation like a chairlift and ski area, not that we're doing anything wrong, it's just, how, 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 how long can you push on the rope? And that's you and your staff, that's not fair. And you probably have a lot of the information anyway.
Yes, we have a lot of, like, there's certain lift things that we have to do.
It just has to be brought to a, into a manual for yourself, but maybe we can find a way to fund that with the foundation and us, I.
We have select work contingency too, but.
Yeah, we have select work contingency too. Why don't we find out what that's going to cost to do?
I mean, who would do that?
Again, could, could you all have this conversation in the, in, when you're looking at your broader priorities? Because, I mean, this, it's not that we shouldn't do it, but it's kind of like, if we're going to spend time doing this, what do we not do?
Well, I don't, I don't want to throw preventative maintenance under the.
I'm, I'm not saying that, Bob, but you're the first one to say, is it on the priority list? We got to be consistent with all of that, and got to figure out what's.
So we do that right after, we do that in, we'll do it in July.
After the new board.
Why would it be on the, or does it need to be on the priorities list to, so that we get access to the general fund? Or, because it seems to me like it's an operational thing from the Snowball, it's not a.
That's, I get your point, no, I agree with you 100%, but I'm saying is, if, if the town was going to have to spend a lot of time, I would agree with you, we should make, we should recognize we're putting a burden.
But it, but it is, because like Beth said, they have all of this information, and it needs to be consolidated, you want to get a person to do that, but that's a lot of time for Beth and Rochelle to, because that information has to come from someone, and that's all staff that's feeding it in, so.
Or something.
And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, I'm not saying we're not going to do it, I'm just saying we need to recognize that there are other things that we're not going to do if we're going to focus on that, and that's okay, if that's a priority.
I get it, I'm right here.
Well, I think when we do our priorities work, I mean, the, last year we had, you know, one meeting that was sort of priorities, and that isn't really realistic in terms of the ability to really think through everything.
Okay.
So we probably need to lengthen that out.
I also think you probably return to it a few times over the course of the year, because things do change.
Yeah, yeah, it gets used as a weapon a little bit sometimes, whether it's on or off.
Discussion on the priorities, this is.
Yeah.
Uh, onto reserves.
Just ask real quick what the personal property restoration is.
Sure.
I have a question about capital improvements.
Oops. My question is probably, is capital improvements also?
Okay, go first.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So during the Siemens work this past summer, they had to turn the water on and off, the electricity on and off while they were doing the work, and one evening, the electricity came back on, the well pump turned back on, and water found the weakest point in the lodge, and it happened to be the little tiny PVC pipes that feed the coffee machine in the little scramble in the kitchen.
Hmm.
And that flooded the whole main part of the lodge, went down into the patrol room, flooded the ceilings, flooded all of their medical equipment, their bags, their ropes, everything that they keep in the patrol room. And we had to call in Superior Restoration to clean up the flood, and we submitted an insurance claim, and this is part of, I'm not sure why it's 6,899, but.
That we've spent?
That's what it shows.
Those are actuals, yeah. So that is actually the line for the replacement of the medical supplies for the patrol room.
Seems like personal property restoration isn't the right place to put this. Well, what, I just don't understand what that means. It seems like it's what, damage from a flood.
Creating accounts for.
We had to create an account.
Yeah, it was.
Why is it personal property?
Well, you can name it anything you want, we just needed to find, we needed to just create an expense account to.
Change the title of it, but that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Snowball property, right, I mean, it's our own property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's no individual's property.
And, but, but where I'm confused, it was not covered by the insurance?
It, if you look, yes, it was.
The town's insurance, yes.
In the revenue side, I did put in the, the insurance claim proceeds as actuals in FY22, so we got almost $30,000.
Almost $30,000, and we're, we need to also still get 3,000 and something from them, which we just need to basically show them that we did replace all of these medical supplies.
It's a lot of premium we pay for not getting covered.
Answering your question.
Okay. Um, I know that you didn't have the opportunity because of everything to complete the tubing hill this year, and you have no budget, proposed budget to finish it. Where does that stand?
We, well, we need to install the Mighty Mike.
Yep.
Uh, we have the plans, which unfortunately, we didn't get the engineered plans until November.
I know that, yeah.
Um, which is why it didn't get completed. Uh, but the plan going forward is pretty much the expense will be wages and some cement.
Oh, okay, so you don't need.
So we do plan on doing it, and it's on our list to do, so.
The one question I have is, I know the sort of temporary hill you had this year did not go to the height that the original one was, will you be extending?
Uh, we can't extend too much.
Why?
Because we would need to build massive berms to keep the people from ending up into the parking lot.
That's a good idea.
Had it before.
Uh, but it also ran, if you remember, the tubing hill came where those wooden steps are, it came down and went clearly across the whole parking lot to a tree that we had at the entranceway.
Mm-hmm.
And so you, you, we built a berm at the end of that tree, the end of the parking lot, and that's where they, you have to have a certain amount of runout to slow the tubes down.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or else it's too dangerous.
And it was a long level runout on the old one, I remember it, and it was.
A lot of snow.
And you also bermed it, so you had double protection.
So it, it's a, it basically is engineered for how mu, how, what's your elevation? How much runout do you need?
Yeah.
So.
Speed and distance. I laugh because I had a friend that did it in Mount Stone when I was in, in, in high school, and he, when, he took the tube way up the hill it was supposed to, and he wound up going down the hill, through the ski lift line, under a fence, into the parking lot, all the way across the parking lot, without hitting anything. Don't want that, anyway, okay.
No.
Onward to capital reserve, ah, sorry, reserves period, which is the compressors.
Yes.
Can I, there's, there's one little thing, I'm not sure where it falls in all of this, but there was talk from the budget committee about the outdoor heaters.
Oh, and the, on the deck?
Yeah, and that seemed.
It's a large, no?
Like a good thing to do, and that we've just given up on. I couldn't quite tell what the impediment to that is, that's something that's.
Not really given up on, it's just those things were really impossible to get.
Get them now, though.
Yes, we can, if there's something that we want, we just need to find a, a safe place for everybody to be.
Because this whole thing of like having everybody sit in their cars idling is just.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So. Yeah, I know, but there are a lot of good reasons not to go in the lodge too. But it just seemed like that made sense to try to do, lots of restaurants have it, and is there a, a budget area?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty cheap, it would be under the Alpine or the lodge line that we could find to purchase something like that, absolutely.
So you don't need any budget adjustments to do that?
I'd rule by them for you.
Or even if we needed to hire somebody to come in and install them or something, to make it not just some, I don't know, to figure it out for you, or.
I think, I think part of, you can only, we could only get like two or two maybe to put on the deck. You can't have them out in the snow because it's uneven terrain, you've got people moving around on skis.
Make it very icy too, the heat from it.
They would just have to be like those restaurant ones, and maybe the two on the deck, and they would have to be.
Well, they have a smaller torpedo ones now that are the vertical, you know, that might be smaller footprint, but still you don't have a lot of room on the deck, I get it.
You've got the big picking tables there too.
I do think they, they run right through the propane though, just to keep that in mind. But I, yeah, we're happy to, we have.
Burning through the gas too, and sitting in the.
We have fire pits that we can put wood in and fire, fire those up. We have wood on the mountain that we can, Stuart sometimes rents a, a splitter, and he splits up wood that we pull down from the mountain, so.
Cool.
Our pits are cool.
Yeah, I mean, just if there's something you would need to expand that, I don't even think it necessarily always needs to be right at looking at the mountain necessarily, or.
Yeah, that.
To encourage people not to be right, just sitting there idling.
Do you think you have money to rent a few if we, if, in this budget, you can find some money to do that? Because I think it's a good idea also. Especially those new ones, they really work well, those, I call them lava lamps, they have the.
Lava lamps?
Yeah, well, they have that.
That's what we tried to buy.
Yeah.
They're not, exactly, exactly. Sitting on a bed of glass, marbles, whatever, they really warm up really well. The better thing, rather than those things you can never like, you can never like the damn things that they're.
No, and also the heat goes up, so heat rises.
And let's move on to the reserves, which is the compressors, which you're proposing. Uh, this is the, I presume the two, two?
Two.
Two compressors that you talked about buying, no, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Buying, uh, used two compressors for around 40 something thousand dollars each, is what the proposal is. Mark?
So first question, are they still available? Because you were.
They are still available. Right after our last meeting, um, they sent us an email, are you guys still wanting these? Because we need, we might have to release them, and Rochelle worked her magic, and they're holding them till tomorrow for us, so.
Quick question, you've used four compressors in the past, we own one, so you're buying two, would you just use three then? Because you have them available for a longer period of time, as long as you need them.
Yes, exactly.
So we wouldn't have to rent the fourth.
Yeah.
Cool, so that would save.
Any kind of like written thing?
Yep.
That.
Holly and I prepared a little thing for you.
Oh, cool.
It's pretty easy reading, but it.
Not for me.
But that would have been great just to have ahead of time.
I'm fine, good.
Yes, I agree.
Because like we, we sit here and like spend the weekend trying to like read over the stuff and.
In time.
Figure it out, and then think, oh, should I say something about this? Do we have any information about this? Like, how can I support this? Oh, should I call Audra, and blah, 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 blah? And if Sophie just had it, then, then I can be like, oh, I don't even have to think about making a statement about not having enough information.
Let me at least, um, say that compressors are essential to making snow.
Yep.
We have to have them in order because it's air, compressed air that we push with the water that makes the man-made snowflake or ice particle, if you will.
According to the information, regular, um, nature-made snow is a snowflake, or you could, and man-made snow is a sphere, um, as opposed to a snowflake.
I definitely understand that we need to make snow, that isn't the issue.
There's nothing to do with it.
It's like, really, like truly nothing to do with it. Um, it's that not understanding the, the range of the equipment options and.
Well, it, it's as simple as.
Like this takes a little bit of time to read.
Technical, there's a technical line of questioning, there's a, and there's a financial.
Absolutely.
The technical one, because electric diesel, all those kinds of things. The financial one suggests that renting one of these things costs about $4,000 a year.
A month.
A month for three months.
Two months.
Oh, two months, so it's, that's four times.
Each.
Yeah, right, 8,000 times two is 16 grand.
And then the freighting of them here and there.
350.
How much is that?
Well, that total would, was 38,000 this year.
Yeah.
Well, that was because you took it from Buffalo.
Yeah, it's been about 27, I got to go back and look at the actuals.
Twenty-seven, eight forty, the year before.
It's usually about twenty-eight thousand when they have them available in Scarborough.
Yeah, I get that, but if it's, if according to the numbers in here, there was four thousand per unit, eight thousand total for two, for two months, sixteen thousand, plus shipping is another eleven thousand dollars from Scarborough. What are they chucking them on?
It's ridiculous. We've, we've begged them to use our own, our own equipment and stuff. And some years they do let us, some years they say absolutely not.
Well, they're big enough to be towed, right?
Yes, they, so second page shows you the actual piece of equipment. It's towed behind.
They're making money on their-
Yeah. They have to pay somebody to truck it here with fuel and all of that.
Question on that, on Zoom, Stephanie French is asking, do we have people that can fix them if they need fixing?
So fixing, it would be, depend on what's wrong with it, but yes, we do have wonderful mechanics on staff that currently, even though these were rentals, were changing the filters and doing the oil, you know, the oils and everything that needed to be done to run them for the two months that we have them. When we, the one we own, we already maintain. We already know how to maintain. It's the same exact piece of equipment.
That first pay goes, has the cost of the used, but then there's a couple of prices for the new ones.
Yeah, it's either- It's a hundred thousand versus two hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Roughly a little more than two hundred thousand for buying new ones.
And these nine hundreds are the amount of power that we need to do what we need to do. So they make sixteen hundred, they make massive ones of these, they make smaller ones, but these, these are the size that we need for the mount, the size of our mountain.
Is there any warranty or maintenance coming with these?
They are going to, there's only thirty days on parts and pieces because they're used, but they are gonna service them before we get them. A full service.
Thirty days doesn't help us because we're not running them until December.
I know, I agree, but-
So it's useless. But, so, so they only have, so I understand, so now I, I understand. We run them five hundred hours of snowmaking compressor time per season. So two hundred and fifty hours per compressor.
Nope, five hundred each. Because they're both doing, they're both doing the same job at the same time. Yes.
So, so so far they have sixty-two thousand, sixty-two hundred hours.
Eighty-eight seasons before it hits its life.
Which we'll never have any eight seasons.
No! So-
So to me, that's, that is exactly the question.
Yes.
Because, and if we, if we run them, what, what was your back of the envelope just a few minutes ago?
Twenty-eight thousand a year.
Twenty-eight thousand a year.
Right.
So then twenty-eight thousand a year.
It's four years.
It's four years.
Four years break even if you, if you, if you- Well, there's, there's maintenance on all compressors. I'm sorry, do you have a new one or an old one that's maintenance? You got, somebody's got to pay for that. That's gotta be, that's gotta be covered someplace. I assume it's in the maintenance budget someplace, but-
The other advantage, though, of buying is you will have more, you'll have more ability to make more snow at times when you haven't had in the past.
That's when it's cold.
Because you, you send them back in February, right?
Late February, yeah.
Late February. So we have some, if we have those really good March-
Yeah, the end of January, I'm sorry, the end of January.
Yeah, so you have February, you could see, which is usually our coldest month. You could make some really good snow and extend our season, which a lot of people are looking forward to. We have more snow.
Absolutely.
And you could also start earlier. When do they usually come?
Well, usually we get them in the end of November, right after Thanksgiving, because our read date is the twenty-eighth of November, and that's when we can turn on the power without getting, with the, 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 the demand charge, excuse me. But this year, we didn't get them until the twelfth of December.
Right, right, right.
Just one.
So that's the reason that we weren't, that we didn't continue with the snowmaking all year was about the electricity costs, not just the-
It is. It's about the nine, well, we, we get charged a nine thousand dollar demand charge each month we turn it off.
So if we had these compressors, it's not, we wouldn't necessarily change-
The revenues are there? I mean, it's, it's a, it's a question that we had-
Well, it's a question, and the only-
We could have had a much stronger March if we had had snow.
Possibly, but I, whether or not they would have chosen to do that or not, I think it's gonna be a-
We don't make snow in March.
Not typically.
No, but we could have made more in February.
I thought we ended January thirty-first.
We send two of them back. We also do have three fan guns that do not use compressed air. They create their own that we can blow in different locations on the mountain. We got, we have a-
When do you, when do you stop making snow, period? I thought it was January thirty-first.
Well, we've, in the past, we have done touch-ups in February when we absolutely have had to.
Because you don't need the compressors.
Right.
So I kinda like the way Stephanie is wording this question. Like, under what scenarios or what kind of hurdle might come up that you could see that would make this a bad deal? Like a bad, like where we would look back and we would say, oh, we shouldn't have done that?
I don't see one. Well, I don't see one. I see the headache, if we don't do this, I see the headache of getting two. And even the chance of getting two this season and not being able to make snow at all, and then having to stand at the door and shake everybody's hand. That's what I see.
I guess my, my, one of my concerns is, this is a company here who rents compressors, and there's a huge demand for them.
Yes.
And for some reason, they've decided that these two can be off their fleet. They don't need them when they could probably rent them. And they make more money out of rental than they do. So they're gonna buy two new machines probably to replace these.
Probably.
For the reason is, is because, probably because their maintenance is at a point when they wanna get rid of them.
I don't think that's the reason. I went on-
Why would they sell them if they can make that kind of money, like our money of renting, on them continuously? Why would they sell them?
Good question. I just know that I went on a couple of other sites to see some that could be for sale.
Yep.
And they were three times more to purchase. And they were similar in years and in hours.
It's a conundrum. I don't know the answer either, Beth, but, but I, I just, that's makes me suspicious. It's, and, and, there's, there's always risk in everything we do or don't do. I understand that, and your frustration with that, by the way, because everybody points at you when there's something wrong, and Holly, too, by the way. But I, I think, but I, but I, but I, it's, that's, that's what's in my craw, and I'm having trouble with that, that's all. That's all.
Yeah. And also they have zero resale value.
Well, I don't doubt that. I don't doubt that.
That, once we purchase them-
Why do they not have resale value? They clearly have resale value.
They would. Oh, yeah.
If they don't have resale value, then what's happening to us?
You're gonna buy them for forty-six thousand, we're gonna use them for eight years.
Whatever years, whatever years.
By that, by that time, they're amortized, they're done. There's no, they, they only have salvage value.
Well, we have made our money, Beth.
That's, that's, that's a debate you could have to turn blue. I don't know.
If, and the other piece of this, if we do not do this and we cannot get our hands on the electrical ones to rent if we don't purchase, then we're gonna be stuck with diesel ones. And the neighborhood is gonna be up in arms and we're gonna be spending-
Very electric?
Way more money on diesel fuel.
What did we get last year from Buffalo?
They were two electrics.
Well, you didn't use diesel before?
I'm, I've never, I, with the crew, we've never had diesel, but there are several ski areas that had to use diesel this year, and they said it was, the cost was off the roof, the neighbors hated the sound.
So if we, if we were to buy Jody and use this hundred thousand, what does that leave for reserves for the Snow Bowl? Approximately?
About thirty? Thirty.
And we're also taking away the twenty, the thirty-eight thousand they've got.
For the rentals.
Oh, for rental.
Lower the, the Alpine by thirty, by thirty-eight thousand.
So if we lower the Alpine by thirty, then we only need seventy?
Yeah, but, but you also have fifty-three.
No, if they lower the Alpine by thirty, then this, this reserve, you should be seventy.
But your budget is going up by fifty-three.
Right?
Fifty-three thousand to the budget. No, we would just reduce the expenses because this is money that we currently have.
Right.
And that's expenses that we've projected.
Yeah.
And at this, at this point, with all the changes that have been made up, up until now, we need to still add another fifty-three thousand to the revenue side to balance the budget.
Understood. Yeah, I figured, I figured that's where we would go with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a risk, of course, but I think we're gonna be able to cover the electrical things we've done. But I saw a hundred thou, I still think if you have thirty-eight thousand in rentals in this budget and you don't rent the machines, the thirty-eight goes away. Right?
You don't rent it, then-
Yeah, if you don't rent it, and you buy them, the thirty-eight goes away. You don't need a hundred thousand dollars.
No, we still, we need that to purchase the equipment. What I'm saying is you're lowering your bottom expense line.
Right.
And we don't need to raise as much in revenue, but we wouldn't reduce that to seventy.
We would leave it at a hundred thousand, but we would reduce the Alpine expense to zero.
I, I don't, if we're, if we're, fifty-three we added for electricity and stuff, that's gonna, I, we're thinking that may be increased revenue. So so far, we're even.
Right now.
Right now, right?
You're, you're at a negative fifty-two thousand, eight hundred.
But if I add fifty-two thousand somewhere in revenue-
Into the revenues.
Then we're, we're, we're in a, a safe place at the moment.
Mm-hmm.
But in this, in this, there's a hundred thousand dollar item and a thirty-eight thousand dollar item.
Right, so if I took out the thirty-eight thousand-
Yep, yep.
We will only need fifteen thousand on the revenue side, which means we've left the hundred thousand dollars in there.
See, you, you didn't hear what I said.
Okay, let me, I'll, I'll-
I said, if we took the fifty-two thousand dollars extra and added that to revenue, forget about the, forget about, I must hit you, forget about the compressors, then we, if we added fifty-two thousand revenue, everything's zero at the bottom line.
Where are you gonna get fifty-two thousand to add to revenue?
Optimistic sales.
Optimistic sales. We haven't even looked at revenue yet. Maybe we should look at that and see if that's feasible or not.
Do you want me to leave a thirty-eight thousand in, or do you want me to take it out?
Well, first of all, I get to the, if we're zero with the fifty-two thousand, then you're, and Matthew just went through his wrong. Because if, if, if we're at zero with the fifty-two thousand electrical added, and we have thirty-eight thousand in for compressor rental and a hundred thousand dollars in for compressor buy-
So I'm gonna put-
We take the thirty-eight out, you only need sixty. Not seventy, sixty.
I don't think this hundred thousand is hitting the revenues, correct?
Not revenues, no.
No.
I mean, it's not hit-
Well, wait a minute.
It's not in the expense.
It's a separate account?
It's coming out of reserve.
It's a separate, um, it's, it's its own-
The Snow Bowl budget, seventy-one, fifty-six reserves brings in a hundred thousand dollars.
So the bottom line for all expenses right now is one million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand.
Oh.
Okay? And, and that's, that's with me removing the thirty-eight thousand out of Alpine snowmaking lease.
And adding fifty-three thousand.
Right.
And the revenues right now is one million, two hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred.
If you take out the, the, again, if you, if you, is an expense in there, thirty-eight? You're bringing in monies of a hundred thousand. If you take the thirty-eight out, the net is still sixty-two. I, I, I miss, what am I missing?
I'm, I'm not following you, Bob, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Do you, are you understanding?
We don't, we don't budget that way, Bob, ever. We budget this way when we're looking at a line and what the cost is. We want the true cost of that piece of equipment. We don't wanna be fudging it across different lines.
Budgeting it?
Oh, but you- Yeah, by saying like, we're only gonna budget seventy thousand for this because we're assuming that we're gonna make it up here by reducing this amount.
But take, let's take a look at revenue and see if we can increase the revenue.
But, but wait, the, the reserve is already in the expense.
What?
It's included in the expense.
Right.
The hundred thousand is already in the expense.
Right. We always have the, the expense side and then the revenue side.
To match.
That's out. You don't, you don't need the whole hundred. Oh, you do. You still need the hundred, but you're taking thirty-eight out.
Right. You're just taking the thirty-eight out.
So it's thirty-eight thousand. So that would be, help us-
Right.
That reduces what are expenses.
If we, if we can play, use a revenue thing as a adjusting, partial adjusting factor.
Right. And, and right now, after taking the thirty-eight thousand out, we just need fifteen thousand dollars on the revenue side.
The one, the one advantage of this, if they have trouble, if they have trouble getting equipment like they did this year, one of the most important seasons is the holiday, Christmas holiday season.
Yeah, I get all that.
We're really prepared. We could be better prepared for that, which would really up our revenue.
Then we can, then we can up the revenue line then. You know, I'm sorry, you can't be taking it to, you gotta do one or the other. My point is, if we, if we have, the concern I have is using a hundred thousand out of a hundred and twenty thousand dollar slush fund we have from, not slush fund, my, my black money we have positive from last year.
So you're, you're talking FY twenty-two, you're talking the current year?
Right.
Yes. Okay.
So if, if we use-
So if we did that, if we, if we spent a hundred thousand dollars before June, okay, that reduces what we have in our, in our slush fund for the Snow Bowl.
Right.
So next year-
Right.
We will still budget for the hundred thousand dollars, but we just won't spend it. And there, at the end of the year, we'll still have-
If you have a hundred and twenty now, we spend a hundred-
Basically reimburse ourselves.
You're carrying forward twenty. If we have a hundred and twenty now, we spend a hundred now, you have a twenty carry forward, period.
Yes.
And that's, that's my heartburn.
That's your what?
That's my heartburn. We should be carrying over more of the one twenty into next year for contingency. That's what I'm having trouble with. I don't care how you add the math, that's, I think it's too much.
And I'm, I'm just saying, we can, we can do that or buy the compressors. That's our choice.
We can do what or what?
You, you either buy the compressors-
Take select word contingency and use it to replenish.
Yeah, I mean, you could-
I mean, we could if we were actually concerned.
Well, I am concerned. I think it's-
I'm just saying, you can't do both things. You can't carry forward a bunch of, you know, surplus from this year-
Right.
And buy the compressors.
Oh, I get, no, I-
You gotta do one or the other.
You could use select word contingency to purchase part of the compress, for part of that-
You could use part of that, that's true.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter. I mean, does it, it doesn't-
But if the goal is to keep that, that account healthier.
I guess it comes to the definition of what's, but last year, we did the same thing. We had a chunk of money left over, we spent most all of it on refurbishment of this, refurbishment of that. We're doing the same thing now. What happens if we hit a tough year when we're not open for weather purposes from December through-
I would just say, be prepared for Beth to come to you saying, I couldn't find any compressors, it's gonna cost a lot more, and I need you to use that money to pay for more in rental costs for compressors. I mean, that's, that's the consequence.
That's the risk. That's exactly the risk.
And then we have zero revenue.
Right. It's, it's, it comes to risk management. You wanna do the risk, you don't do the risk.
What if we buy one? I mean, we could just buy one.
No, I, so, so Beth is gonna tell you, don't buy one, because by, buying one only solves half my problem, and then I have to rent a second one. So we're not, we're doubling the amount of problems we're creating for her.
No, actually not. Actually not.
We'd be doubling the problems for her.
But she still has to rent another one.
Yes, yes, you still have to rent another one.
Which, I think we have a golden opportunity here to get away from the rental for a period of time and take advantage and give the, the people that use this mountain and come to this town an opportunity to have a really good snow year as, as best we can under the conditions. I think it's, I think it's, it's a gamble, it's a risk, but so is having a ski mountain these days. And I think, you know, we either do our best job, put our best foot forward and do the best job of running it, or, you know, get ready to put bicycles on the mountain all year.
Yeah, you see, we can go to revenue. And, and when I looked at revenue, I saw in FY twenty-two, actuals were a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over our budget for Alpine income, not to log in. That was another, another line item. A hundred, yet this year, we're budgeting on that line less than that. Why are we going down?
Are we going, how much are we going?
Well, a million-
We're going down nine thousand.
A million twenty-two was the actuals for FY twenty-two. FY twenty-three says an odd number, a million thirteen. I kind of imagine number.
I'll tell you why I did that. So I've been at the Snow Bowl for seventeen years.
Uh-huh.
And every year, we have a bad natural storm, a natural, natural snowstorm year. We had thirty-nine inches of natural snow this year. And we don't end on a snowy spring.
Right.
Like we have the last two, three years now. Season pass sales tend to fall. And when we end on a really snowy spring, they buy early and they're excited, and that's what they remember. It's just what I've noticed over the years. So, you know, that's probably why I budgeted a little less. I, I don't, and I don't know with the pandemic somewhat ending, and I'm gonna walk, knock on wood, because I said that, if it's gonna be as popular.
We always budget revenues conservatively is always sort of the town philosophy, right? We wouldn't-
If you've gone from FY twenty, where we're three quarters of a million, to FY twenty-two, where it's, it's, it's thirty-three percent higher, I, I don't see the swings. I, I don't see any swings in these numbers at all for the last, one, two, three, four years, four years, one, two, three, four.
She's only budgeting like a few thousand dollars less than what our actuals were. Am I looking at something different?
No, yeah, one million twenty-two minus one million thirteen is eleven thousand, yes.
I called that a few thousand. I mean, that's a small, very small percentage of-
It is a small number.
It seems like if some, if she were to have put in, oh, I'm assuming we're gonna do one million twenty-two thousand next year, we would have said, how can you expect that you're, we're always gonna do as well, Beth, you know? You can't expect we're always-
It's a risk, it's a risk.
I mean, I wouldn't-
If you lose to Boggan Nationals, that's eighty thousand, I mean. Some, some people might even say that that is too optimistic, given the, I mean, I don't know.
Well, yeah, let's, let's bring it to a head, board.
Yeah. I mean, I, to, to me, there's a bigger issue, and I'm, I'm sorry to, to bring it, but the, the issue is that we're budgeting for the Snow Bowl season over season. And, and I, the Snow Bowl's life is, is limited in, in the winter. We know. I mean, it's gonna be like, what, ten, twenty years? We don't know exactly. But what I would really love to see is, you know, having a, a strategy for how do we maximize our use of the Snow Bowl for the last years we have of, of a mountain instead. No, but I mean, you're laughing at me, Allison, but that's, but that's the whole, I mean, I'm, I'm asked to buy machines I mean, I'm asked to buy machines that are going to provide us with 88 seasons of snow, which we'll never have. So I...
I don't think there, anybody thinks they're really going to... If they were to run that continuous with hours...
Exactly. I understand this. But the issue is that are we better off renting for the next 10 years or buying machines? And I have no basis to make that decision. That's the issue I have because I don't know what the plan is for the Snow Bowl.
Well, it becomes to Mark's point, it's a little bit of a, what do you think's going to happen? They're not going to happen. What are you going to get them on time and not get them on time? Is COVID going to continue to be an impact on equipment or not?
One of the things that could happen is we're looking at the rental charges for the compressors as staying the same. And they will probably go up as well. So, you know, we need to think about that. This fixes our costs. But renting is we have no control over those costs.
Unless like a mouse... At least, the only thing I think about the rental ones is that they come to us pretty much guaranteed to be working for the season and when we own things.
Not all the time. I mean, they say they're going to be ready.
I mean, how many times have we...
We've lost days where she's called them and they've had to come and fix them.
Oh, sure.
But they do come and fix them, whereas if, you know, a beaver chews through one of ours or a rat because it runs out of food on chestnut hill or something...
Still got to fix them.
Yep. I do want to say that part...
Okay, they'll be insured.
Just to remind everyone that part of the Siemens energy audit, they really looked at our snowmaking system.
Yep.
And they came back with a whole plan.
Oh, yeah.
We got a grant for it.
And we got a grant for it
Yep.
to be the most efficient that we can possibly be with the changing temperatures that we're going to see in the future.
Understood.
If we don't own them and we have to wait for somebody to get our rental ones here and it's cold December 1st, we're going to want to make snow that day.
Mm-hmm.
We can be the most efficient that we can be.
Hmm.
I'm sorry?
So that's like really helpful information, right, from the... So there's a plan for being more efficient with snowmaking?
Yes.
But like, we got to have more stuff come to us at the... I know it's not, you're not in charge of the select word agenda.
It's because it's three years now?
What's that?
That we talked about it?
It's not contracted yet.
No, but we had a whole plan drawn up by the experts.
Yeah, right.
I just have no idea about any of this.
Me neither.
No, it's there, but it hasn't been contracted yet, right, Audra?
What do you mean contracted? But just knowing that like there is this, there's somebody thought a lot about this.
Yes.
And there are certain components that are not in question.
Yes.
It's helpful to know that, oh, this whole thing that we did, if you don't do this part of it, we can't do...
Pretty sure we had a meeting, did we not have a meeting? And I remember you being there.
Definitely. This was all lumped into the Siemens.
I was not a part of any such meeting.
But the issue there was one also in that system would reduce your compressor requirements because they would modulate the pressure going up the hill, as you recall.
It was going to be zoned, correct?
But before Beth, and it's in your, it's in this little packet of information, she did reach out to the company that did the plan for the snowmaking to ask about the compressors and whether or not that would fit with the entire system because that wasn't really addressed as a piece of equipment to buy. They did, you know, they did think about what would be needed. And it is compatible with, you know, everything that's planned to be done that's funded by that grant.
There's just no way that I can process all this information right here. Like, it takes me a little while when I look at something and be like... And then to have it, I don't know, like, that's all just really helpful information.
We could pull it all together real quickly.
Well, we have till tomorrow.
No, we don't.
That's when...
I'm supportive of... I mean, I think we can buy the... I'm going to go with what is recommended by the people. I mean, I...
I feel like there's a little bit of analysis paralysis going on right now.
That can happen.
Yes, but it's like, you guys forget that we do not, and the general public, we do not know all of this stuff, but it's just like obvious to you guys. And so, and you forget who have been in all these meetings where you've talked about this. And so it's like, the same thing happens to me with other things that I'm knowledgeable about. But you got to like, imagine you're talking to just like an elementary school level sometimes or whatever, just remember, we've been studying this.
Yeah, a lot of it's information flow. A lot of that's what it is. But, and the only, you know, you take a risk when you buy or you relent. I get that. But all I'm saying is that taking 100,000 out of the 120, in my opinion, is a mistake. Let's fund it a different way.
And we have a very healthy select word contingency?
How much is it?
$100,000.
No, no, the contingency.
$1 million.
Yeah, yeah.
The balance in those contingency. We know how much the compressors are, for God's sake.
I think you have 150. And I think you've committed a lot of that to other things that you want to do.
We have.
Can you give a list of that sometime? Because I feel like when we go to use that, sometimes we hear, "Oh, you've already, we already have all these things."
I mean, I could, but at the same time, like, a lot of these things, we... I mean, there's a lot of other factors as to whether or not you spend it.
Let's bring it to a head. I think we should do is take, I'm going to throw out numbers, 40,000 on the select word contingency, 60,000 half of the 120 that we have in the bucket for the rest to cover this purchase with the proviso that no more equipment buys will be brought to us without a substantial detailed analysis of purchase, sale, as Sophie had recommended, looking at longevity and all those things. We've got to have that. And by the way, happy to help you with that. You know, don't want to...
We should hire Bob to do it the way...
No, no, don't do that. That's a big mistake.
I mean, this makes me nervous about the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant because I kind of thought...
Which we also don't know anything about.
I mean, I thought, I assumed that everybody was supportive of moving forward with the snowmaking system.
I am supportive theoretically if I knew anything about it.
But I guess like, you know, we're talking about 100,000 for compressors that are needed to make that system work. Pretty soon, we're going to come back saying to you, "We need to figure out the match requirements."
That's the point.
Give us a little presentation about how all this works.
Yeah, that's, you know...
The issue is that we have piecemeal information.
More towards the match?
Well, yes.
Like you're laughing at us like we're just a bunch of idiots that we don't know...
No, I'm not. It's just, it's...
It's like we don't have a complete picture of all that's in, you know, how the Snow Bowl functions, what are the brands, what are the match, what is the equipment? You know, how, in two years, we're going to need to buy new...
I mean, so much of it is opportunistic. I mean, just today, we got a grant denial on the, on a huge grant that we applied for. So I mean...
No, I get that.
Yeah.
I get that.
Just found out today.
The event center?
Yeah.
Oh, bummer.
It's just, it's information flow, timely information. Yeah, I agree with Allison, getting this now. I have to read it now and absorb it. And that's difficult. I can, I'm no tech, I know compressors. But it's not fair to throw this stuff out. It's just like, that was the, that's the issue. And by the way, I don't want to put all this burden on you guys. It's too much. I think there's ways we can help you with that. And when I talk about, you know, number of years, I'm not talking about doing a strategic plan for the future. I'm just talking about having somebody take a look at, you know, give an independent analysis of how long this thing, seven to 20 years. That's probably what's going to come up, something like that.
50,000 hours.
Well, I'm not talking about the machine. I'm talking about...
No, no, we're talking about how long the Snow Bowl...
The day comes when you can't make snow in December. That's going to happen if we believe in the climate changing. And we won't be open in March. It may be a shorter season. So you may, even with the new, up to 39 degrees, I think you can make snow with the new system, about. I think it's about 39-ish.
There must be additives. Are you saying we need a climate scientist? We want a climate scientist to come and speak to us?
Just, you know, we're doing this with the landing. We're doing this with the landing because the sea is rising. You know, I personally am not sure how much the sea will rise. I am personally not sure how much the temperature will rise, but we got to be consistent. That's where I'm coming from.
And efficient when we can be.
And I would, yes. And I would love for the Snow Bowl sake, you know, the temperature's not rising because that would take the burden off my mind for worrying about sea level rise. But I can't do that. So that's where it's coming from, Beth. It isn't just about that. That's the kind of thinking, yes, we could hire an independent to take a look at that if we want to.
I would love to.
But to get this part done, though, you know, we don't want to stall on it. I think if we take some out of select word contingency and 60 out of the rest...
I can see the benefits of buying the compressors and I understand the benefits. But the bigger picture would be super helpful for me.
Well, we can use some of the money left over for somebody to help us plan that. Because it's not fair to put all that on your back.
And I'm not, that's not, I'm not asking you. I think we should get somebody...
That can be discussion about strategy and policy going forward.
On the priorities.
How does the board feel about a mixed funding of the $100,000?
I'm in support.
So, I mean, I support the goal of having there be more of a cushion for things going wrong because I don't like it when they feel like they have to make all these, you know, little decisions to avoid going $8,000 over budget. And, but in terms of account, like, is that... I also like the idea of keeping track of where things are coming from. And so sometimes when we use, I guess I would look for like Audra's recommendation on how can we accomplish the goal in an accounting way, like...
I mean, I would just keep it simple. Just all of that reserve, just spend it on the compressor and make a commitment now. If something breaks or something comes up during the year, you're going to use your contingency to fund it.
But we need to know how much, what we have already committed in contingency. That's a piece of information we need before we can make that commitment.
Yes.
Say that again?
We need to know what we have committed to the contingency already, because we have.
Yeah, I don't remember a lot of commitments to it.
I know, me neither.
I don't remember making any.
We're 25 anymore, so we don't remember.
Can we use the compressor to pump water for a slip and slide in the summer?
No.
Okay, let me make a suggestion.
It's to lighten the mood. I thought it was a reasonable question from the public.
I think we should move away, I think we should, I think we should move ahead one way or the other. The alternative, I think, is we take the styrofoam from the docks we have to replace and spread that out in the mountain so that people can ski down on the styrofoam. And then we buy a couple rolls of duct tape to fix whatever we need to fix.
There you go.
That's my alternative. But other than that, I say let's do this. It's the best plan going forward to take the best advantage of the conditions we have now.
You just said you supported Bob's plan to take money out of select word contingency. And then, so what are we...
I don't care which way we pay for it.
We're trying to decide where to pay for it from, not whether to do it exactly.
That's what...
So I think we got to the point where we were going to buy the compressors. But, I mean, if in these cases, I just generally go with what Audra...
The only question remaining is what we have committed to the contingency fund and whether we're using the full 100,000 reserve or not, right? That's what we need to figure out.
I mean, the funding from contingency does get like messy in terms of tracking year to year. And we lose the history sometimes.
And I guess it's, and that's sort of, Jody and I have been trying to kind of stop spreading things across multiple accounts because it does get hard to...
This is a special project fund, right? As far as our accounting goes, it's a special...
For the Snow Bowl?
Yeah. Special project fund. Approve it with the understanding that we're going to approve the purchase of the compressors. But as far as approving the budget, approve it without it right now and we can clarify the funding later.
Okay.
That sounds good.
I didn't make totals.
Basically, we're saying we're going to spend $100,000 on the compressors. We're not going to put it in the budget at this point in time because we might do it with some partial contingency money from the select word or not. And we can always modify the budget one more time.
Like tomorrow? She needs to be here for that, so before she has this baby.
Say what?
We have so much to do before she has this baby. Just for that purpose.
Tell the baby to wait.
Yeah. We got to keep this funding thing out.
No, Audra.
We'll fund from contingency later.